Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Thursday, November 8th, 2018. I'd like to call the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FAA TV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. And I would ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Is there any such person in the audience this evening? Seeing none. Counselor Fleming, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag? Counselors, before we move to public forum, if there are no objections and if there is a member of the audience here wishing to speak. Well, Madam Clerk, would you please conduct roll call before we address?
President Kuschmerich. Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Squelia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
There are no objections. I would like to first hear a report from the Appointments Committee. If there's anyone here in the audience who wished to speak under public forum specifically to the appointments tonight, they can come forward at this time. Is there anyone wishing to do so? Seeing none.
I would like to.
To the Appointments Committee?
I think so.
All right, okay.
Petition?
Nope. So that's, this is specifically for the items that were on the Appointments agenda today. So the Appointments Committee met earlier this evening and took up the following matters. New appointment for the Board of Trustees of the Public Library for term to expire October 1st, 2021 of Ms. Jaclyn A. Kramer, who is with us in the audience here this evening. Thank you, Jaclyn, for being here, as well as the following reappointments for the Fitchburg License Commission for terms to expire April 1st, 2024 for Mr. Glenn Fossa and Ms. Donna Pollak, and as well for the Board of Assessors for terms to expire January 1st, 2022 for Mr. Chris Paquette and Jerry Mallon.
(Inaudible).
I have a motion and second to approve the Appointments Committee report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. I want to congratulate Ms. Jaclyn Kramer for her appointment. Thank you in advance for your service to the city. That said, we'll now return to the agenda. Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing.
My name's Calvin Brooks. I'm city auditor.
Tom Peterson, Building Maintenance Director, Fitchburg Public Schools.
And we're here to talk about item number 276-18, which is an order to transfer $217,000 from the reserve for other municipal purposes, capital expenses, to the Long Joe School Roof Replacement Project. In the information that was sent with the, with the order, there was an updated cost estimate for the roof project. If you look through that, you can see that the project cost has exceeded the original amount appropriated by about $367,000. Tonight, we're asking for suspension of the rules and passage of the first order for $217,000, this transfer, which will enable us to move the project along. There's some things we have to order and get moving on, and time is of the essence. I would point out that there will be a subsequent order once free cash is certified, I believe, for $150,000 to complete the project, to do some things that we've encountered as we've done the roof. Tom can be more specific about the project itself.
The project has reached a point, and we needed to make a decision on gutters and how the gutters were going to affect. We're going to go with a manufactured aluminum-style gutter, which was going to have a better maintenance-free aspect and be attached to the building a little differently, so we won't have as many issues with water intrusion.
Great.
Motion to suspend the rules on 276-18?
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 276-18. Speaking on the motion for suspension, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 276 is before you. Counselor Green.
I guess my question would be, was there any one particular thing that ran to be such an overage, or was it accumulation of little things that weren't anticipated? I mean, this is, now we're up over a half a million dollars for this project, so I'd just like to know how we can keep coming in at such shortages.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. The gutter itself, when they looked at it and took it apart, there was a lot more damage there than was originally assessed, looking at it from the outside before. So once you stripped off the coverings, it had a better idea of the damage to the wood structure.
Okay, so those, they were original wood gutters, right? All wood gutters?
Wood-framed and lined, yes.
And that, that's been three, for $300,000 and some thousand dollars for gutters? Is that what you're telling me, that it's $300?
That's part of it.
Okay.
Part of the other things that have come along is an update to the sprinkler system and the re-insulation and asbestos abatement of the heating pipes in the attic area.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
So, the old roof, there used to be a snow load so bad that it used to come down on the front of the school. The new roof is asphalt, so it probably won't as slide as bad, but it could, under the wind, still slide. Aluminum gutters, are those going to collapse under the weight of that snow coming?
No, they're designed for this, and there'll also be snow retention bars on the roof, too, to hold the basic snow load on the roof.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
On the, on the roof itself, you're telling me that the snow's going to slide off of that on the, on the regular shingle? I never seen that happen on a regular, if it was all smooth, I'd say yeah, but where it's not smooth, it would just stay there and just melt. And my concern about the gutters is that, once the sign goes down, the gutters freeze. And are you going to have heat elements in those gutters so the water keep on flowing through? Because once they fill up with ice, and they do fill up with ice, if you drive around neighborhoods, you see them. The houses, they're filled up with ice, and then you start getting an ice dam because the water starts going back in, up underneath the roof. But my biggest, that's one of them. And the other thing I have a hard time with, really have a hard time, we gave you $2 million. $2 million. That's a lot of money, $2 million. And now you're coming back for another, almost another half a million? We can't get any closer than that when we're making these bids. We can't, you're talking, that's over 10%. You're talking almost 20%, Tom should cross the aisle, am I right, 20%?
I think, I think in the original specs that they did for the building on the gutters, and I'm just going to focus on the gutters first, they estimated that we would be replacing about 60 linear feet of gutter. When they got up there, as Tom mentioned, it was significantly more, and to the point where the architects were recommending that we just start over, because we were, we were taking out so much that there wasn't enough left to, to have as a basis for repair. So, we were given two choices, and one was either to replace in kind for an additional $400,000, or to replace with these aluminum gutters for an additional cost of about $225. An advantage of the aluminum gutters versus the design now is, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if there's, if there's a break or damage on the gutter, it will leak down the front of the building, and we will be aware of the leak. The way the design is currently, if there's a break in the gutter, and this is one of the reasons we have problems with the building, is that the break in the gutter, the water flows into the building and down the inside wall and not the outside wall. So it's harder for us to detect the, the damage.
Well, my question to the man over there is this. I'll go back to the idea that I drive around the city of Fitchburg, and the heat of a storm and a lot of snow, and when it gets cold and warms up and it starts to melt, your gutters freeze up. They literally freeze. Some in buildings that I have seen, and probably all of you have seen it, the gutters fall. Are they going to have a heat element up there, what do you call it, Tom? Heat tape? Heat tape up there to keep the flow of water so it won't freeze and it won't back up?
Not in this case. They're insulating the roof, trying to make it a cold roof system, so that when the sunlight disappears and the roof will actually stop melting and not fill the gutter anymore. So then when the sun comes up and warms everything, everything will keep flowing. The old roof had a lot of heat inside with no insulation, so the heat kept penetrating, like a lot of old buildings would penetrate to the roof's surface, even in the middle of night, and then go down. Once it cleared the eve and there was no heat, it froze right there. So, this should be eliminated by the insulation of the roof.
My final question, I won't, hold on. $2.45 million, and we're not doing nothing to that overhang in the back of the building? And I think that's Pritchard Street, I think, up there, where they walk into the gymnasium?
Pleasant Street.
That square pot? What's that, sir?
Pleasant Street.
Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street. We're not doing nothing to that?
That was an option that was not picked up on the original contract, so at this point, there is nothing being done with that, correct?
Why? It might be your next one, you can just keep on writing checks and not be responsible. All right, it's all right.
Gentlemen, typically during a project of this size, you have a contingency built into a project budget. Did we have a contingency originally as part of the original order that we made? And if so, in what amount? And then, is this, is this $217,000 that's before us, is that after a contingency, if one does exist?
Okay. There is, on this budget currently, there is a revised contingency of $80,000 going forward.
Going forward? Was there one originally?
I believe so. I'd have to, I'd have to dig through my records to see what, what it was. The other piece that, that's in here, and this, this'll be more the focus of the second appropriation, once we have the free cash, $150,000, had to do with, in doing the roof itself, up in the attic were a lot of steam pipes that were insulated with asbestos that had never been abated. And there was concern that doing work on the roof might jar that asbestos loose. And so, as a precaution, we abated the asbestos and now have to come back and insulate. I think something similar with the sprinkler heads, where the, we got up there and started to do some work on the, we had to, as I said, shut off one of the lines temporarily to do some construction work up there. And the, we found that the heads were original to the building, and think that it would be wise to just replace them before there is a problem.
Thank you. Mayor, you wish to add something?
Mr. President. Mr. Brooks, would you, would you please clarify where this 217 is coming from?
Sure.
Please?
Sure.
It began with that. Thank you.
Okay. The $217,000 is coming from, coming from within the budget. It was part of the $300,000 that we had initially budgeted as a capital reserve. We've taken 25, 25 or 40,000 for the fire pumper, and another 30,000's on the agenda for tonight to do a vehicle at the airport.
Understood. Thank you. Counselor Dina Tally.
It may have been budgeted, but was that ever part of the plan? To use that budgeted capital money for this project?
For this project, I would say no, not necess, it was, it was budgeted, it was budgeted because we do have a plan, a longer-term plan to build up our capacity for debt service in light of the fact that we're doing City Hall renovations, Crocker Street School and the library.
I understand what, what was in the budget.
Sure.
I'm saying, this was not part of the plan. We thought the $2 million was enough.
When we started, we thought the $2 million was enough.
So something's got to give for this to happen, is my question. Correct?
We've got to dig deeper in the pockets, yes.
Just want to point that out. It's not affecting us financially from a budget standpoint. We have coverage, but this wasn't the intent of what was put in the budget. Something else is going to get replaced.
Mayor Dina Tally, Counselor has the floor.
And what bothers me about this is, when you take out a loan order of this nature, you bake in a considerable contingency. I'm starting to get nervous about future projects, and everybody knows which one I'm talking about, where this is going to happen. Where they're going to open the walls up and they're going to find problems. Which is standard, it happens everywhere. That's not a city of Fitchburg fault. It happens in people's homes. You get an estimate, you start opening up the walls, and oh, work scoping increase. No one can argue with that. Problem with this order tonight is, we don't have a choice. We can sit here and hem and haw about what happened, why it happened, you know, we can all pretend like we know what we're talking about, because I don't know anything about gutters. But I do know that if we don't do this, they're not going to fix it. And then I'm sure the public's going to be very happy with that. The Senate will have a field day with the headline, "We only did half the roof." Okay? Because there's such crack reporting anyway. So, I had to be lectured for years on this council, how we don't care about our school buildings, which is ridiculous. We spent $2 million on the roof, which, by the way, should have been done in the last three mayoral administrations. Everyone forgets that. They just kept kicking the ball down, down to the goalpost. They opened up this project, it's a 70, how old is this building?
80.
80, 80-year-old building. I had no illusions that, when they open stuff up at a building that's 80 years old, they're going to find stuff they didn't know about. So I'm not here to point fingers at anybody. The council president asked a good question, though. When you take out a loan of this magnitude, there needs to be a contingency baked in. And I know there was one. I believe it was close to $200,000, if I recollect. I think the quote was like 1.8 million. And we ended up taking out a $2 million loan for, it was, you know, about a 10, 10% contingency, maybe a little more, which is standard contingency. This is something that they did not anticipate nor find, and we have to expect this is going to happen, whether we like it or not. But again, what are we going to do? Tell them no? That's not going to fly with the public. I have no problem approving this, because we don't have a choice, quite frankly. And we did bake a contingency, and it's, it's well beyond that. So I'm not laying the fault on anybody, but when is this going to be done? This is the longest roof project I've ever, ever seen. When's this going to be done?
It's going to be done in the springtime now. The projections are out into April or May.
April or May?
Yeah.
Right. And to answer part of that, too, part of this is that we have to order the gutters. And so that's one of the reasons we're, we've asked for suspension of the rules, so we can have the funding to go ahead and order the gutters. Is it lead time of 12 weeks?
12 weeks, yeah.
12 weeks lead time.
So I, I see the mayor's getting agitated, because I'm asking legitimate questions. But the, the loan order that was approved, I recollect, I don't know why people are giving me looks here. When we approved the loan, it was supposed to be done by October 1st. Then it was supposed to be done by December 1st because of the rain. Now it's May?
Some of it's the winter, too, about being able to work in the winter and with the snow and all of that. And the other is the ordering of the gutters.
Yes, it's a revelation. When you go from October to May, it's a revelation.
Mayor, the Counselor still has the floor. Counselor, are you done?
Well, no, I'm not done. Because I'm going to have to get the calls later. I'm supposed to go like this, you know? Sweeping under the rug. I care more about the schedule delay than I do about the cost.
Counselor, do you have any further questions?
Are there going to be any, this $300,000, that's just to cover this extra, right? Are we confident, gentlemen? I wish the contractor were here. Are we confident there won't be other surprises we're going to get? I mean, have they, have we gone through the whole project and said, "This is something we didn't anticipate, we're going to cover it"? Did they do any sanity or spot checks elsewhere on the project to say, "This could pose a problem, that could pose a problem"? Because I really hope you guys don't come back to us a third time. It's a legitimate question I have. Have we, has the contractor or the school office done a due diligence in assessing if this is where it's going to end? This is it.
The architectural firm has gone over the numbers. The school department is looking over the architect's shoulder. The builder has revisited things several times, and we've looked at it. We're pretty confident in the numbers that we have here.
I will support the order, because we don't have any choice. We have to invest in the school building, and I'm not faulting the city at all for this happening. No one here saw this. But I'm not supposed, I'm not going to be happy about the fact that what was supposed to take to be done in October is now in May. All right? Because I have parents asking me every week, "When's this over"? Recognizing there's been weather issues, but, you know, October, then December, now it's May. So, that's all. Thank you.
Counselor Caddy. Counselor Donnelly.
Just to comment on construction. If anyone is familiar with construction, and any kind of remodeling, they're unknowns. This is, we're in New England, I mean, 80, 80, an 80-year-old building isn't that old around here. But, that are unforeseen, unseen, and unpredictable, happens all the time. There are very few remodeling projects that go smooth as silk, especially on a scale this large. So I can recall, maybe 20 years ago, that they just painted the cupola, just painting the cupola, cost $60,000. So, it's standard procedure in the construction business, not pointing fingers. Nobody's usually happy, and you can hear another dissatisfied customer.
Counselor Boishman.
Question. And this project's all done. Is there any kind of guarantee that the roof won't leak and the gutters will stay up there for a period of time? And are we going to go back to the contractors if the roof starts leaking and the gutters fail?
We're going to go back to the contractors if any of that starts to happen. Yeah, the shingles are a 50-year warranty, applied by, by the standards that the manufacturers, you know, requires. So, that should hold a 50-year warranty.
Okay, all right.
Counselor Zurella.
I'd just like to second Counselor Donnelly's point. I'd like to point out, we just recently had the ribbon cutting at the Research Results Building this past month, and that was initially slated to be open last October. So, yeah, construction delays do happen. This isn't even a government inefficiency thing in this case. This is, that was a private project with excellent contractors, and things happened. We got open a year after we were supposed to. It is very frustrating, but, you know, like Counselor Dina Tally said, it's not really anyone's fault. There was nothing that really could have been done differently here.
Counselor Walsh.
I just wanted to clarify that the reason for the delay is only because we're waiting for the gutter materials to be delivered. Is that the reason for the delay?
At this point, yes, because we get into a window of that it's, it's much more difficult to work with the items. It's got a long lead time. That puts us into February, so snow shoveling wasn't part of the original thing, so we'd end up with more costs.
But everything else has been completed thus far?
Yeah, the majority, yeah. We've had the cupola, and we have the gutters left.
Thank you.
Very quickly, Counselors, thank you.
Yes.
Counsel President, I want to make it abundantly clear that we have not had three days of straight sun since we started this project. Rain has delayed this project, and on top of that, we've had one of the hottest summers that we've seen, and OSHA does not, does not allow construction work to happen when it's above X degrees, I believe it's 85, on top of that roof. And they can't work regardless of the sun. So between the rain, the sun, and now the frost, they cannot go up on the roof. When there's frost on the roof, it delays the project even further. So between the weather that we've been handling, and the delay in the materials, in production of the materials, we're doing the best that we can to meet the deadline and get the roof on as quickly as possible for the school department, the children, parents, and teachers. Thank you.
Motion to approve 276-18.
Second. Motion and second to approve 276-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Back to public comment. Again, I want to, to clarify, I know there's a number of folks wishing to speak on a couple of petitions that are on the agenda this evening. There is a two-minute maximum to speak, and I just want to confirm, everyone who's here, should you so choose, you will have an opportunity to speak. But keep in mind, these are statements. The council can't answer questions or engage in discussion or deliberation with you, so this is simply an opportunity for you to provide comment to us. That said, anyone wishing to speak may do so now, and I'd ask you, as soon as you come up, if you could state your name clearly. And I apologize if you have a last name like Kuschmerich, if you wouldn't mind spelling it for the city clerk, just so she can keep record of it, as well as your, your street address in Fitchburg. That said, the first person wishing to speak this evening? If there are none, we'll move on the agenda.
Is it now time?
Yes, it is.
Mr. President, Tree will help generate a list.
If, if there are folks looking to speak, our Assistant City Solicitor, Tree, is happy to take your name and address to, to help expedite that process. So you could sign up with her, and then she'll bring the sheet forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Paul Lewis. I live at 133 High Street, Fitchburg. I'll try to be within the two-minute range. On October 23rd, I was at the library to hear the public forum for the new marijuana store coming into the city. And I spoke with Counselor Walsh and Squally at that time, and they told me I could file a petition with the city to persuade the board to file a motion to reduce the number of stores from eight to four, because I've been made aware that it's 20% of the liquor stores in the city. Eight would meet, be 40% of that. Four would be 20%. So, the number's been doubled. I understand there's a revenue involved, but there are several reasons that it would be safer to reduce it to the required amount, 20%, which is four stores. I brought a copy of a letter in. I'd like to pass it around. You may have gotten this in an email, I'm not sure, when I filed the petition, from District Attorney of Denver, Colorado, who actually called me tonight, and I wanted to verify with him, are these things that you wrote true? And tonight, when we spoke on the phone, he says they are indeed true. He said, "We were promised that the crime rate would go down in our city, and in fact, it's gone up." And the various points he makes in his letter indicate in what areas the crime rates have gone up. Was told he was overstepping, and he purposely made it a point not to get into social issues, just specifically focus on crime. And the crime rate in Denver has gone up significantly, and he wrote this letter to California voters with regret that they had done this, you know, based on the crime that it has produced in their city. And there's several other people who want to speak. I know we're not going to talk back and forth. I didn't know that. I thought we were. So since the library date, probably within a week, we've achieved 190 signatures. They're in agreement with why I filed this petition.
Sir, I'll ask you to conclude.
Would you like to see the signatures?
If you'd like to circulate them, we'd place them on file with the, the city clerk, if you're amenable to that.
Okay. And can I get a copy of those later, if I come down to the city clerk?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Let me think. Yeah, just based on the crime aspect in Denver, and the, the data that the district attorney provided to California, is my reason for asking the board to file a motion to vote reducing the stores from eight to four.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you for hearing me.
Appreciate it.
The next person we have is Pastor Steve Mayo. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Mayo. I'm a resident, 276 Elm Street, and also the pastor of the Elm Street Community Church. And I will state that I was one of those people that, when, when this came through for the state, I bought into hearing all of the discussions about how this would lower the amount of drugs on the street with all the things that go into it, as well as the ways that this would help. And I voted for it at the time. And since then, I've seen data that has shown that crime has gone up in areas where this has been legalized. They've actually, you've seen, you all have a copy of the letter from the DA's office, but it actually talks about the fact that illegal drugs, there have been more marijuana seized in Denver than there were before everything happened. There's also the correlation of things that have happened with children, where the 2015 Healthy Kids Colorado survey data indicated that regions with pot-friendly policies showed some of the highest youth use races in their states. some of the highest youth use races in their states. Some of that probably has to do with the fact that some of the edibles deal with, look like candies, like candies that we can find on the shelves, with just subtle changes to the names. And in the American Academy of Pediatric News of May seventeen, adolescents with symptoms of mental illness accounted for a large proportion, sixty-six percent, of the three thousand four hundred and forty-three marijuana-related visits during the study period, increasing from sixty-five to four hundred and forty-two. So not only is there an increase in crime, there's an increase in youth drug use, these are all things that were not expected, and it did not decrease the amount of drugs that were found, marijuana that was found in the city. In fact, they found that they were getting more of it, not less. We as a city, I know, are required to do a minimum amount of four stores. That's required because some didn't realize what they were getting themselves into, others did, but the reality is, we don't know how this is going to affect our city. We don't know how this is going to affect the crime rate, we don't know how this is going to affect our kids, and for us to start by doubling the amount of stores that we're required to have doesn't make sense until we know how this is going to affect some of the kids and the families that live in this city. Because if we allow these stores in, and we find out that it has a much worse effect than we expect, what you're going to find is decent citizens moving out of the city, and at that point, what are we going to be able to do? So I also am recommending that at this point, we reduce the number from eight down to the four, which is the minimum required, until we know how this is actually going to affect our city, and then make a decision on whether something else should be done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have George Small. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you and share my concerns. Appreciate all you do for the city also. I pastor a church, Horizon Christian Fellowship in Fitchburg. We moved into Broad Street, 2000, we've been there eighteen years. We have a ministry on Sunday night that we started a long time ago, because Fitchburg, from my perspective, is a city that has a fair amount of drugs going through the city and people struggling with drug addiction. We started a program called Most Excellent Way on Sunday nights, have ministered to quite a few addicts in the area over the years, and we have changed it over the years, it's now called Freedom in Christ. But we've taken young people off the streets that we've worked with, sent them to different programs beyond ours, even to California, to try to get treatment for drugs. So the city of Fitchburg is a city, it's known for that, and it's just very clear, there's a lot of drugs in our city. A number of years ago, you may know the details, I don't, but next to us on Broad Street, one of the tenants next to us, there was some sort of drug task force, federal drug task force that moved in. We, we only could tell from a distance, they were well armed, they came at night, and we just heard a little bit about it, but there was some sort of drug bust that was going on in our city. And I just say that because that's, that's just a burden on a lot of our hearts for the city of Fitchburg, and we're trying to make a difference. Well, recently, a couple of weeks ago, you know, I know we have data from Denver and so forth, and you can debate this sort of data, but I was sitting at our church, we were having a food fellowship time, and I happened to be sitting next to a police officer from Littleton, young guy in his thirties, and as we were just breaking bread together, I asked him, his name is Jesse Owens, he is a police officer in Littleton, he lives somewhere here in the North County, and I said, you know, hey, listen, I'm just curious, marijuana situation, what do you think about it? What do you think about, you know, the city of Fitchburg? And the next thirty minutes at least, this young man expressed a tremendous amount of frustration, exasperation, because of what he's currently seeing on the streets, Littleton, the 495 corridor, he's a, he's a young police officer, and I realize we're just kicking in, in the state with this recreational drug and the sale of that, of marijuana, but evidently it's getting on the streets more because of just the decriminalization and the change in the culture. But he expressed to me the incredible frustration of repeatedly pulling over young people who are high on pot, and he explained it to me, I didn't even know exactly, he told me, he says, you know, when they eat the brownies, this is exact words, these young kids, he says, it's like they're drunk. He says, I can't, our hands are cuffed, he says, I can't, I can't tell them to get out of the car now, and I guess even the law is making it frustrating for these police officers. But he says, I have to ask them, and if they step out of the vehicle, the best we can do is take them to the tank for the night, you know what I'm saying, they're very limited. But he says, these kids, it's like they're drunk, there's so much in those brownies that they could hardly even stand next to their car. And so why in the world, in a city that is already struggling with drug addiction and a drug problem, why in the world would we want to increase the sale of marijuana on our streets? I am ministering to a young man right now.
Sir, I'd ask you to kindly conclude your-
Oh, did I go too long? I'm sorry, but there, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. We've reached the end of our list. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? We're going to circulate this list one more time, just that way, so anyone else who would like to sign up, and then once we reach the end of this list, we'll conclude our public forum. Sorry, sir.
My name's Keith Betry. I live at 474 Clarion Street. I'm the pastor at Beth Eden Baptist Church. As I well know, I know the city of Fitchburg is under a number of financial constraints, and we just heard previously that we were. I know that the drugs that are being brought in here by this is bringing in supposed money for the city of Fitchburg. But you need to consider what it is actually doing beyond that. If you've paid attention to any of the other states that have had this, if you've paid attention to the news in the last two weeks, one study that just came out was that in each one of the states that they found that there's six percent rise in accidents on the road. Then you find that as they're doing the study, they're finding out that they, with the recreational marijuana and this, they're finding higher rates of health concerns. They've now linked it to a greater rate of diabetes. But the fact is, is we're dealing with not just health issues and accident issues, we're dealing with people's lives. When you counsel people that are addicted to this, it's a binding thing, and when you give the people easier access to it, it's something that they then destroy themselves on. And as pastors and other individuals in the community, we know the disaster that is going on when it comes to drugs, and to bring this into the community, we're just making ourselves a hub, access point for everybody to come into a place like this to get access. If they can't get it someplace else, they'll come to Fitchburg to get it. And for public safety, for public health, for the, the stability, and the, well, the good, and, and at least attempting to help individuals while we as pastors and churches are trying to get people off of this, to bring in a number of these things, places, eight of them at least, I'd be for zero, but the minimum right now is four, we should go no higher than four. We've already got enough problems on our streets and people that we deal with all the time that are on drugs and cannot get free from this.
Sir, I'd ask you to-
And so, we would petition that that is the case, and we appreciate your service otherwise, so thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Deb Chura. I live at 269 Fifth Mass Turnpike, and my concern is, is that, you know, whenever it's, when you're dealing with children and, and all of the vaping that goes on, and you know, if you look at the Sentinel and, and you see a thirteen-year-old on there, my daughter's thirteen, and I, heaven forbid, my daughter would be on some kind of marijuana or any drug at any point. But you know, whenever we're making this readily available for them, and it's going to be in my backyard, that, that, that really cuts to the core. And you know, you, you can say it's parental, but you know, if there are other kids doing it and we're making it available, that they're going to want to try it. And making it gummy bears and brownies and all these other things that kids are, are wanting to use, they're going to want to try it. And so, you know, I was sitting in, in the car with my husband, I had a headache, so I didn't go in, and there was a lady there with her baby, and you know, she was hugging on it and everything, and she was waiting for three other people to come out of the car, and one of them came out, and she was very, very angry, because she couldn't get the drugs and the money to get it, and she was just carrying on something awful. And, you know, while, while she was out there, the mother says to her, I don't have the formula, I don't have the, the, the bottle that I can feed my child. So she gets in and she lights up her cigarette and turns the radio up, and I'm, I'm there for two hours, and while I'm there for those two hours, I'm wondering why she, she doesn't leave. Here she's waiting on two other adults that look to be the mothers of these two younger ladies. And you know, you would think that the grandmothers would pick up the child who was, who was crying and, and take it out of the car because the radio, I mean, it was loud, and no, they didn't. They were worried about their own drugs and their own things that they were into.
Emma, I would ask you to conclude your remarks.
Well, the point is, is that, you know, when we already have people in our society who are not caring whether their child has formula to eat, and they would rather have, have drugs or something else, we're contributing to the problem. And, you know, if, if we're not, if we're not looking out for the children, who else is going to? So I just, I'm just, I'm just pleading with you to not have, you know, this marijuana problem, because if, if we're having, if we're having this problem already, having eight more sites here in Fitchburg is not going to help. So, that's what I have to say.
Next is Timothy Robinson.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Timothy Robinson, seventeen Brigham Park, in Fitchburg, yeah, so. Can I say, can I get started?
Absolutely.
Alright, so, I pastor Highland Baptist Church, Cedar Street, originally from Monroe, Used to be on marijuana, you know, marijuana lettuce, other drugs, homeless and, and all of that, and by the grace of God, I was saved out of that, went into the military, served my country, that's how I got to Massachusetts, still trying to figure that one out, but the Lord sent me here. We, we moved to Fitchburg about three years ago, me and my wife, we started helping children who were in the neighborhood, who were, most of their parents were addicts or recovering from that, we started the Fitchburg Youth Haven, we even partnered with New View, and so we were really starting to see just, just a lot of success from that. And we really bought in also to the new Fitchburg. I think we came, there was a language that I was hearing that there was going to be a new Fitchburg, it's going to be like a movie theater, and trying to move these landlords out who are like these slum landlords, and I was like, man, I want to be a part of that. I want, I want us to be a part of that. So, we really bought into that, but now recently, we've been hearing about the marijuana coming in, and I was just thinking, I used to work at Burbank as well, and seeing overdoses, I think my first day on the job, someone coming and leaving their girlfriend who had overdosed right in the parking lot, we had to bring her inside. I was just like, man, but you know what? The police are out there. Man, we, we love our police, no, this, ten years from now, this city is going to be a great city, it's no longer going to be on that list of worst places to go, but now, it seems like, I just have to ask a question, I'll just be done. Our, Fitchburg has to be worth more than money, right? Thank you.
Next, we have Stephen St. Laurent.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for hearing us. Keep me at two minutes, can you give me like a thirty-second wave?
I will, absolutely, you got it. I can do that.
I go long, and I don't want to do that. Hey, so I am a Lemister native, I was Blue Devil Thanksgiving Day senior year on the football field when we lost to Fitchburg in ninety-six, okay? And so when my wife, who's from Oregon, I say she's an immigrant, she's like, Steve, well, look for a house in Fitchburg, I bought a house in 2014, I said, I'm not going to live in Fitchburg, and so I've grown to love Fitchburg. I am a Fitchburg resident now, and I'm not kidding you, I'm not kidding you. And so, and the truth is, I, I told a buddy of mine, who's an acquaintance, I, in my field, my, my work, and he said, you bought a house in Fitchburg, he's from Sterling, and he's like, that's one of the four cesspool cities in the state, and he named them, Holyoke, Lawrence, Fitchburg, and, and I'm telling you, I love living in Fitchburg because people look down on us, and I just want to second some of the things. I've met people, and we're working with folks, I wrote down some things so I wouldn't go off track, but I want to think big, who do we want to attract? Like, I just want to appeal to that. Who do we want to attract? What kind of business owners and outside influencers are going to invest? Who do we want to attract for customers? They're going to come from around to Fitchburg to buy this, and they're going to drive away high. I know engineers, professionals, my wife or family, others, I'm a mechanical engineer myself, and they wish they never did it. A good friend of mine, he was, he got, he started with marijuana, got into, uh, bigger drugs, and he says, I wish I never did it. He's like, I would never want my kids to smoke it. And so that's just something, I never got into that scene, okay? But who do we want to attract? It's still illegal to the federal government right now. I watched a documentary on, you know, The Profit on CNBC, and he looked into investing, he decided not to, because he said, you know, there's too many variables, I'm leaving that to other people. But that is one other variable, I don't know that they shut it down, but what about bringing, what about investing millions of dollars? What about chartering a WNBA team, Central Mass baby? Let's bring, let's, let's bring the community around something we can have lots of jobs and lots of investment and not get lured by this thing that's, that's kind of, could be, could be a bandwagon thing. I'm not down on you guys. You're trying to do your job, you're trying to do good for the city, but I, I'm really against it, and you can see a lot of folks come out that really have this sentiment. So I appreciate you hearing me out. God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
Chad.
Pastor Chad?
Chad.
Chad, I apologize.
I have two minutes?
You do.
I shall not take two minutes. Pastor Howard Shad, 134 Pacific Street. A few years, months ago, I had a vision, believe it or not, of a desperate time in Fitchburg, and a decision was to be made, and the mayor would have to be making it, and the chief of police would have to be making it. Remember, Mayor, when I told you that in, in, in the cozy corner? What I see, from talking to many addicts, that what they're saying to me, that this is the, the gate into deeper drugs, and if we allow this to happen, we must stand up for our rights, we must stand up for our city, this is our city, I love this city, I wasn't born here, but I've been here for sixty years, I've raised my children in this city, and I think this thought today, we stand at a crossroad, we can either stand up and push back against this, or we can accept it, and the day will come when we will wish we had of. Thank you very much.
And our last speaker is Pastor Bradley. Is Pastor Bradley with us? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity.
Very welcome.
Members of the city council.
Good evening. I spoke the last time when we had the meeting at the fire department, and I expressed myself clearly, this is a great city, thanks to God and thanks to Mayor DiNatali. We don't want this to be another business of tax revenue and whatever the devil wants to make it look like good, because the devil always trying to make things look good, but underneath of that is evil. Just two days ago, my son, who was born and raised in this city, Dennis Bradley Junior, became a senator in the state of Connecticut. I want to see all the minorities, I want to see all the Latinos, all the Blacks, all the Whites becoming senators and maybe president of the United States in the near future. Marijuana is an antagonistic substance that's going to block a lot of young people becoming successful in this country. As a mental health professional myself, an expert in the area of substance abuse, that's what I do here in Fitchburg, licensed in the state of Massachusetts, worked many years at the methadone clinic, I know the problem, it's deeper than what we think. If we start opening all this business, thinking about revenue, thinking about money, and not thinking about our children, the future of this country, the future of this city, we make it a big mistake, just like Pastor Shad just said. We need to stand firm, and we need to believe in God- We need to stand firm and we need to believe in God. The God is going to bring us up to the top of the city without getting deeper into something that we right now know is going to be damaging to our community. That's what I have to say, and I hope you take these words and make a decision. That we don't want, I, I want zero marijuana business in Pittsburgh. Zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All have been heard. We'll now hear a report from the committee on records. Counsel. Did we miss someone?
Last one?
Last one.
Please.
Absolutely.
Thanks very much. Yep. Uh, I was, I was in a conference, uh, last week.
Sir, if you could, uh, first give us your name and address.
Oh, the name is Arthur de Barstini's. I live at eighty-nine Albey Street in Fitchburg. Uh, I was in a conference last week and someone was talking about, said, "Tell your story." And if you do tell your story, people will understand where you are coming from. Um, I'm bo- I was born in Haiti, come here as, as a teenager. I went to school to Gordon Ca- Gordon College, lived in Wartham, became a teacher, uh, certified in, at these, uh, four areas. And I was in, I was living in Wartham. And I would like to just give you that point out. Uh, in two thousand three, I was thinking, where should we move? Where should we buy a house? And was thinking, I was thinking, we want to go to a place that is safe, a place where there's a university where, where, where our children could go and a good school and a diverse city. And we moved in two thousand three with all of our kids here. Some of you may know them because they play sporty, writing everything, music and everything. David Theodore, Nathaniel Emmanuel from Emmanuel, from, from elementary school to high school. And all of them went to Fitchburg School, graduated during the Fitchburg School to are working in the city at this, at this, at this time. And we are pleased. I'm really pleased of the choices, of the logic and what we found in Fitchburg. I just would like if anyone else, you know, are thinking about coming, looking for a great city, they would think the same way that I did. And they would find, uh, Fitchburg as a great place and attractive place. Not thinking, wow, there are eight marijuana sites there. But, it, it's a great place where to raise kids. So, um, I would really urge you, just to keep it at four. And I just happen to be as well a pastor of the, of the Haitian church, that is at forty Woodell Street. And the greatest problem that I have is counseling young people who are in marijuana and who have lost their motivation and their desire to succeed. Uh, it's a problem that I have and I'm trying to so, to work with it. And I would not like it to be greater than what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All have been heard. We'll now hear-
Motion for suspension of the rules on those two items.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on petitions two eighty-two and two eighty-three eighteen. I'll read, uh, the first as it's, is largely the same with the second. Uh, Paul Lewis to have the council make a motion to vote on reducing the number of recreational marijuana stores in Pittsburgh from the current amount of eight to the minimum amount required of four. I have a motion and second for suspension. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The matter is before you. Counselor Zarella.
Uh, I think Counselor Green is performing.
Oh, I apologize. Counselor Green?
Um, I guess my, uh, question would be about licensing and how, how many licenses do we already have out or pending for the marijuana retail sites?
Mr. Solicitor, is that something you could speak to?
Yeah, I, I think it's three pending, including we have a, uh, planning board meeting next week. So there'll be three in total. There is, I'm aware that you have one that's substantially imminent, but nothing's been filed with the planning board yet. So you'd be at four shortly.
Thank you.
Counselor Zarella.
I was in favor of staying at four back when we first decided this. And honestly, nothing has really happened to change my mind. I have spoken to a lot of people on the pro side who have given me some substantial reassurances that this might work out in the city's favor. But I've also heard things like we heard tonight, uh, where it also very easily might not. And so, I stand where I stood then, which is saying, it's easy to expand. If we grant four and we have four and down the pike, it's looking like everything's going smoothly, we can very easily, in the span of a month, expand that number back to eight or to any other number we see fit. But once we hit eight, we can't just shrink that back down to four. Then we've got vested interests that we can't, uh, renege on. So if we, let's say we have five or six or seven and then we find out, wow, this really is not going how we expected. Crime is up, accidents are up, et cetera, like the Denver DA is saying. What do we do then? We can't ratchet it backwards. But we can always ratchet it up. So if we get four and then it turns out that all the concerns turn out to be illusory and everything's going great, we're getting revenue, we're, you know, kids are staying away from it, so on and so forth, then great. I, I will be very happy if that does turn out to be the case. And if that turns out to be the case, I'd be more than happy to go back up to whatever number people see as reasonable. But since we haven't gone over four yet, I'm going to renew my support for staying at four, or rather technically going back to four.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
I motion for suspension because I don't know what additional hearings we will need to have to come to a decision that we've already made. We held, I want to say between three and five hearings on this subject before we took the vote. And I don't think I can count on one hand how many people showed up. No one came. So we made a decision. The motivation for the decision was two factors. One, the city must, must allow four in this city. And I cannot stress this enough to everybody in the audience. I will come out and say first off that I voted against the ballot question of twenty sixteen. Unfortunately, fifty-seven percent of our fellow voters in this city said yes. Because of that, the state passed a law. In that law, the state says, you, the city of Pittsburgh, must allow at least four businesses in this city. No exceptions. So the council at the time, and I think it was a six to four vote, was conflicted, but there were two reasons why we upped it to eight. The first reason was because many of us figured, well, if we have to have four, we might as well make it eight in order to satisfy what the ballot question said, which read in part, "Treat this industry in a manner similar to alcohol." So we asked the solicitor and the, the clerk, how many full-scale alcoholic establishments are there in Pittsburgh? And the answer was eight or nine. So we said, "Let's make it eight." And there were some in this room, I'm not saying me particularly, but there were some in this room who argued that, well, if we have to have four and all the evils or the ills that are allegedly associated with it, why not make it eight and, 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 and get the additional revenue? Because the problems are going to be in this city, whether you have four or whether you have eight. There were as few people in the audience tonight who spoke, and this is what the people in the audience really want. They want zero. We can't have zero. We don't have any authority to make it zero, ladies and gentlemen. We are hamstrung. The council didn't unilaterally come up with this idea to have marijuana in the city of Pittsburgh recreationally. The voters of this city, and over nine thousand of them, fifty-seven percent said, yes, they want it. And that's why we're where we're at today. So, we regulated it as best as we could. I understand that we didn't have to go to eight. But we were trying to balance the wishes and the needs of the fifty-seven percent versus the forty-three. And we knew we weren't going to make either side out because the other side wants it to be twenty-five of these places. So, we, we, um-
To tho- to those in the audience, Counselor Deanna Tally, I'm going to interrupt you for one second. I, I, I know this is, uh, an area of passion for you. Um, however, this is a now matter before the council. I, I believe it's important for each of you to be here and observe this discussion and deliberation and ultimately vote on this matter. However, uh, if folks from the public do interject and interrupt council, I, I will then be forced to ask folks to leave. So I, I would kindly ask for your respect as the council deliberates on this matter. Counselor Deanna Tally, sorry.
So, we, we recognize the ills and the issues in Colorado and elsewhere. And no one ever purported to say that there's no societal effects with marijuana use. We were met with a situation that the voters sanctioned. And the thought process was to make it in a manner treated the same as we do in alcoholic industry. So that was the thought process. And there were many of us, and I will say for myself, while the, you can, you, again, as I was saying before, before the council president spoke, the people in this room really want none of these businesses here. None, zero. So my thought on the matter was, are there going to be societal impacts if you have one store in this city? And many people will say, yes, you will. Especially the ones that are against this entirely. There is an argument to be made, and I'm not saying I agree with it or not, that whether you have four or you have eight, the problems will exist. If you don't have eight, you have four, you can still get the product, you can still have access to it. The people who really want it are going to go to one of those four locations. So there was an aspect of this from a financial perspective, not because we were blind to those facts, but because we figured, they're going to be here anyway. We, 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 we might as well get as much as we can out of it because they're here whether we like it or not. And I guess many of us felt, whether you have four, eight, thirty, two, the problems that people believe and have cited that will exist will be here anyway. Regardless, the issue is not the number of establishments. The issue is whether they're here or not. And that is the main question that we cannot, we cannot decide on. The voters of Pittsburgh decided it. Now, the state law that was passed specifically says, because all the emails and calls I've gotten were from people who said they want it gone, not to lower it to four. And I've told every single one of them, we can't do that. We can't ban it. The state law says, for any municipality or town whose voters voted yes on question four in twenty sixteen, the only way to eradicate recreational retail sales and use in this city is to overturn that vote only through a local ballot initiative. That's the law. We can't do anything legislatively. The mayor can't do anything. None of us can do anything. It has to be decided by the people. And there's only two ways to do that. Either a city councillor or city councillors or a member of the public files a petition saying they want a ballot question put on the ballot for Pittsburgh to ban it. Or, if that doesn't work, then a citizen initiative-led referendum would have to take place. And I believe you would have to get eight percent of registered voters to sign, uh, a petition. I think that's, um, twenty-five hundred signatures, give or take. Three thousand signatures. It, basically, if the council does not approve of a ballot question, that doesn't end there. The citizens have the right under the city, the city charter and under state law to get thirty, get three thousand signatures of registered voters, submit them to the court and that kicks off the process to have it back on the ballot. Those are the only ways we can not have this. And I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm simply doing what I believe the majority of the voters in this city wanted us to do. If they have second thoughts, that's what a ballot question would be. The proponents of this question had to go through an arduous process of getting it on the ballot through tens of thousands of signatures. There's nothing, nothing stopping any resident in the city of Pittsburgh from starting a citizen initiative drive to put a question on the ballot to see if the voters of Pittsburgh will overturn their decision two years ago. But that's the only way this is going to not come up, come here. I, I want to just stress it so much because I think people have been expect, I've had people say blame the city for encouraging this to come in. We had nothing to do with this. This was the voters. So, um, we do have a say in the number, but that was the rationale, those two reasons that I explained. It wasn't because we wanted to bring problems or we wanted to disregard the societal impacts. Because again, I voted against the question, but I was in the minority. But, uh, you know, last thing I'll say, again, I can't stress enough, that is, that is what people in this room really want. They want to eradicate it, period. Because the problems that people have cited, they're going to be here whether you have two or fifteen of these places. Because people who want it that bad, they're going to go to those two stores. Doesn't matter if there's eight or two. You don't want it here, period. And that's fine, but we, we can't do anything about that. They're here because the voters said they want them here. Start a citizen initiative ballot referendum, get the signatures and get it back on the ballot for the Pittsburgh voters to either overturn their vote in twenty sixteen or reaffirm it. But that's the only way we're going to settle this question. So that was why we did what we did. And it was over a long, arduous process. We had multiple public hearings, multiple meetings on this. It was not an easy decision. Again, trying to balance fifty-seven percent of the voters with forty-three without being sensitive to both. Uh, we could have gone a lot higher than eight. We didn't want to. But we wanted to find that balance. So, that's the core issue that people have to instill in their heads because it's asked of me every week. Why did you guys allow this? And I say back to them, "We didn't. The voters did." We're just carrying out their will. If you want to overturn it, the voters have to overturn it. Not us. We don't have that power. Thank you.
I just want to say, I want to say something to you. I was one of the people that voted to have eight. As a matter of fact, I went like this and I, to the council and write, I asked them to have ten, ten of them. I didn't do it for a particular reason. I was, just like the council crossed the aisle for me, I voted against the thing. You don't think I'm afraid? You don't think I see what I see out there in the city of Pittsburgh? But then I watched the documentation on HBO one night about pot out in California. And when I saw that thing about documentation, it took the bad drugs, that, the drugs that the people were lacing with different kind of drugs. And they took them away because they had the stores down there where people can get something that was made product, that product was made good and it wasn't laced with anything. And I put that in my mind. I said, geez, would I want that guy to go down to that corner over there where he's picking up a bag of dope and have it laced? Or do I want him to go where it's going to be tested? Where it's tested? And he can get what he wants right there without anybody lacing it, without having to worry about anything in it? I mean, really? And, and I really thought about it. And I had a question. I, and I argued with this council and I kept on telling them, "We're moving too fast, we're moving too fast, we're moving too fast." But, I'm only one, one of eleven. So, I don't know. I study, I, I'm on the fence about eight. I voted for eight. I'm on the fence. I'm going to be honest with you. I've been thinking about, thinking about, thinking about. Because I'm going to tell you what happened to me and it's, it's true. I have asthma and I get the OPD. So I have to take an inhaler. An inhaler that makes, to help me breathe. I took this inhaler, and I shouldn't be telling you this because you're going to think I'm crazy, but it made me feel weird. And, and I got, I started to change my personality. I started to get crabby. And I was going after my friend across the aisle. I was picking on him. Really, I was not telling you the truth. This is no laughing matter. I thought I was losing it. And I talked to my wife one day in bed and I said, "Geez, Tom, I really think this job as a city councillor is starting to get to me." I'm cracking up here. I'm getting, uh, somebody touches me like this and when I hit him. I, when my friend, he calls me up, I'm turning around and somebody has a conversation and I says, "Oh my God," I want to jump into the conversation and I argue with him. So I, she said, "Let me look in the paper. Let me look what the descriptions are." She said, "Oh, come off of that medicine." And I did. And after that, it was all right. It was back to normal. My old drawl is off. They may not think so, but I think so. But I just trying to tell you, I get worried about it. Don't get me wrong. I'm worried about your kids. This job as a city councillor is a very tough job. I take it and all of us take it very, very seriously. And I worry about your kids. Uh, you elected me and you elected these eleven councillors to represent you, the people of Pittsburgh, and to think about if it was your kid. I think about that all the time. I think about even if it was you. Because I'm tired of hearing people saying, "Kids, kids, kids." And all of a sudden you hear them swearing at the kid. And they don't really care, but they use their word kid all the time. But I worry about all that stuff. And I'm still worried today. Would I change my vote? I don't know. I do know that I don't want the guy in the corner selling a bad drug to your kid I do know that I don't want the guy in the corner selling a bad drug to your kid or to my kid, because I have kids. And all of a sudden, he's not right any longer, he ends up in the hospital, or he's on Main Street talking to the windows. I don't want that for any of us. And I worry about that. So would I change my vote? I don't know yet. I really don't know. I wanted to do more research, I feel differently than him or them, I'd like to do more research. I called Denver up numerous times, but like government, I got an answering machine and they never called me back. And I called five different places, I never got a response back. When I was asking the same kind of question, I don't know where you got, I didn't call the district attorney, I called places like the sides of the city of Pittsburgh, and they never called me back. And I asked these kind of questions. So I just wanted you to know, you won't be pointing fingers, I was one of them that voted yes on eight, I even, to the council to my right, I said, why don't you try for 10, let's go for 10. And he started laughing, he said, let's go for eight, and that's it. So, and that's why I came to it, because of the documentation that I saw on TV, on HBO, about how they were putting the pushers out, the guy that was selling laced drugs out, and you got a better product, and that's why I did what I did. So I'll be honest with you, you asked me to be honest, I'm being honest.
Counselor Squallion.
I'd just like to echo Counselor Boishman's statements. We do take our job very seriously. And when we had these many hearings, three to five hearings or so, we had many hours sitting here and discussing it. I have, I have my stack of all my stats and information on cannabis use throughout the state, throughout the country, and I wasn't prepared, I didn't bring that tonight, I thought it was going to not be suspension of the rules. But we determined that, as Counselor Dina Tally said, and I'd like to echo all his sentiments, that 57% of Pittsburgh voters voted for this. The vast majority of our voters, 8,700 versus 6,600. So it was a clear mandate in favor of recreational cannabis. And when you compare other statistics, we have 40 or so package stores in the city to buy alcohol. And on top of that, we have 39 or so pouring establishments where you can go and buy hard liquor, beer, wine, whatever, right? So we're talking about the minimum of four, which was per the state minimum. And when, as Counselor Dina Tally said, in the ballot initiative, it said to treat this cannabis as in a similar fashion as alcohol. And by having 80 or so areas in the city where you can have alcohol, and only four where you're allowed to even sell cannabis, and at the time, we had two that were ready to go on the outskirts of the city. When we were first discussing this, two of them, one of them was going to be in the Airport Road Industrial Park area, all the way next to Lemonster, and the other one was all the way in West Pittsburgh, right near the Westminster Line. And so at that point, we only had two other opportunities for 57% of residents that voted in favor of this to purchase this now legal product. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you. I like Counselor Boishman, do have asthma and I use an inhaler, so now I know I have an excuse if I get crabby. When this referendum came up, I voted against it. And it was basically a concern for public safety. I've been a criminal justice professor for, I don't know, 30-something years. The night that we voted on this, whether to have four or whatever the number of establishments, I remember asking, I think Chief Martino was here, and I asked him if he had, I believe he said he was comfortable with four. The proposal was made for eight, and I believe I asked him at that time, and I could be wrong, I don't want to misquote him, but I believe he said he did not have any additional concerns if it went from four to eight. And that's, I think, is, that was, it answered my concerns, and so I, I did have concerns going from four to eight, but once, what I heard from the chief, I had less concern. The other thing I would like to say is, just as someone who's done a lot of social science research, I would like to point out that just because if you, if you enact something and you take a measure of a crime rate before, and then you take a measure of a crime rate afterwards and the rate changes, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's a cause and effect between what you did and the reduction or the increase in that rate. A lot of these numbers, there's absolutely no citation or no references here to know where this information comes from. And so I, I think it's interesting information, I would want to look at it further, but it, in and of itself, I don't think it's. Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. I just want to say, if everybody in this room needed to fill up their gas, their cars with gasoline, and there were only four stations, we'd all go to the four stations. If there's eight stations, we'd still go, we would divvy it up between eight. Wouldn't somebody like to have just one so they could make all the money on the marijuana? I mean, it's, if there's a demand, it only gives them a choice. This is a highly regulated, highly, it's going to be one of the most regulated things that there is in the state. And the, people can't get into the growing establishments without going into a changing room, everything is controlled environment. The same way when you go in to purchase it, it's going to be extremely regulated. As far as driving and driving under the influence, I can't understand government or science that after all these years, they haven't figured out a way to test it. I mean, it's been around for 50 or 60 or 70 years longer, maybe the Native Americans had it back, way back when, but it's, it's a weed, as they call it weed, it grows anywhere. So people can grow it, it's been around, they still can't test. If you had it yesterday, the day before, stays in your system for many, many days. So I don't know why, it's hard to regulate in the driving part. When we were discussing how many we were going to have, as mentioned prior, one in eastern Pittsburgh and one on the western Pittsburgh, I said, where are the people that don't have motor vehicles, particularly the poor people? They're not going to walk to west Pittsburgh or east Pittsburgh to try and buy it. They're going to go right down the street to the corner house or apartment where they've been buying it for the last 10, 20 years. I've been in Pittsburgh all, most of my life, and every neighborhood is someone selling it, and nobody knows what you're buying. People go in and say, hey, we got some good stuff this time, but you don't know what it's laced with. When you go to the store, it's going to be highly regulated. Anyone that has a medical marijuana card, if you know anybody, ask to see the menu. If you get it on a computer and find out, there's got to be 100 different sizes, flavors, shapes, candies. I just looked at, looked at one, I don't know how many there are, but it seemed like there's 100 choices. So I don't see how limiting the number of stores is going to reduce the usage or the exposure. And the exposure that our children in particular, any adults that are, that are, your exposure to bad stuff, if you want to call it a gateway, it's a gateway because you're hanging around with the criminal element, they're selling things that you don't know where it came from, you don't know who made it, and if they're selling marijuana, they're selling other things too. That's what, my opinion, that's why it's a gateway. They go to get marijuana and say, here, try this. Well, you try that, some things, when you try it, once you're hooked. So that's why I voted for the eight, that's why I supported it, I want to see it regulated, I want to see it taxed. The ones that are doing it now, they're making all the money and it's not going to any good cause at all. So I still support the eight.
I too support the eight. And I've given a lot of thought and consideration to it. And I, I did months ago when we first voted on this, and I won't enumerate every reason that I went into then, but I've certainly tried to take the opportunity to listen to everyone who spoke today and as well as each of the counselors. And I looked at, you know, my method of, tonight, and how I'm evaluating my decision is primarily on what did, what did this vote and what did the legislation ask us to do? And it asks us to treat marijuana, regardless of how we feel about it, regardless of what its past history has been, it asks us to treat marijuana the same as alcohol. And Counselor Squallion very aptly stated the number of licenses and commercial areas for distribution and consumption of alcohol. How is it equal to have, you know, whether it's 20, 40, 60, 80, or four? It's not. And Counselor Donnelly's point of, if you have a market, whether it's 800 people going to four places or eight places, the market is typically the same. On the other hand, I also, I understand what many of the folks who came to speak to us tonight are concerned about. I mean, it's hard, it would be hard to overlook those concerns. We're in the middle of, you know, the worst opioid epidemic this, this country has ever seen, with, with no clear answer on how to solve it. They're concerned about substance abuse and the worst extremes, and they're concerned about children and easy access to illicit substances for minors. And those concerns aren't lost on me. I grew up in an abusively alcoholic household. And I would love to say that if my hometown only had four liquor stores, if the liquor store is only across the street, or, or not across the street, but, but, you know, three blocks down and around the corner, then my father wouldn't have had access to alcohol, and he wouldn't have abused it. That'd be wishful thinking, that'd be optimistic thinking. He was an addict. He abused a substance. Whether it was down the street, a mile away, or five miles away, he was going to abuse that substance. We've made it legal. The voters of Massachusetts have made this substance legal. It's up to each of us, and it's easy to say, it's up to each of us to police this in terms of substance abuse. The police can't, we can't stick a cruiser, you know, next to every individual and monitor their usage. It's families, it's communities, it's support systems, it's everything, it's a holistic approach. Limiting the number from eight or four won't give you the, you know, the relief that you're seeking. Addicts are going to abuse, and whether there's four or eight, if a market exists, they will seek it. So then I'm left to look at, how then is this introduced, administered, and how do we ensure that it's not just four people making a profit off of the entire city? Whether it's, you know, for the most benign or the most malevolent use, how do we ensure that, that it's not continued, continue to be peddled on the corner, but there's, there's access to safe, monitored and controlled substances if they're going to be out there? And how do we ensure that it's best for the commercial market out there? Because that's also a concern of, I don't want two marijuana tycoons in Pittsburgh, I would rather it, you know, spread across so it's community mom and pop shops. I think that benefits the economy, which is also something, I know folks don't want to hear that, but all things equal, we have to examine that as well, that's, that's something we have to look at. So for those reasons, I voted for eight months ago, and there is no substantial change of facts, evidence, and we're a decade away from scientific academic studies that will help guide us in decision-making in the future. And until then, absent anything new, I'm sticking with what my original decision was. Counselor Caddy.
So I just want to make a comment on the level of education and experience of the speakers tonight. I was really astounded by that, and thank you. I'm going to agree with Counselor Kishmeric. Having four or eight, I don't believe is going to make a difference. I think having, if we just had four, you're just going to have 800 people go to four instead of 800 go to eight. However, what I do want to say is that I feel that you people are right, and I feel that, continue to, continue your beliefs and do your job, and don't let what you think is going to happen, happen. You know, protect our children. My, my children are grown, but if I had young children today, I would be right on all the time. That's our job as a parent. And one comment, the chief is, the chief of police is very active in the locations that these are going to. He's hands-on with it. I've said enough, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fleming.
I want to echo what every counselor said here tonight. I too voted against this, and I understand everybody's concern. Unfortunately, kids are going to get, have access to this, and it won't be from these retail establishments. They will be going, they'll still be going to the corners. The, I learned today that the retail for these items are very high, and they do have to be 21 years old. So a problem already exists. I don't think the problem is going to get worse. I think it's going to stay exactly the way it is. I guess really that's all I have to say.
Counselor Zarella.
I'd just like to respond to a few of the points that have been made, and, but before I do, I want to stress that I don't think any of my colleagues have said anything that is untrue. I'd just like to introduce a bit of nuance, hopefully, to some of the points that have been made. First, I'd just like to point out that we did have many, many hearings on this, but the increase from four to eight was only raised at the point where we were taking our final vote. Technically, we had two more procedural votes after that, but that was just to confirm the initial vote. The amendment from four to eight was made only during our last sort of omnibus deliberation. It was not something that we had many, many hearings on. Secondly, I'd like to, and I know I'm going to wind up on Facebook again because I'm going to retread some of the points I made last time about similar. First, I'd like to just point out that the phrase "similar to alcohol" appeared in a single paragraph of the long-form ballot summary. It did not appear in the single top line next to the voting bubbles, and it did not appear multiple times throughout the summary or throughout the law itself. So I'm leery of putting too much weight on that. We don't know that all 57% who voted yes actually voted for "similar to alcohol." We just know that they voted for legalization of recreational marijuana. We don't know how thoroughly they read the ballot initiative, and because of the nature of ballot initiatives, because it's just a yes or no, we don't know how many said, I agree with all of this, so I'm voting yes, and how many said, I don't actually agree with some of this, but on the balance, I'm in favor. So we can't assume too much on that, especially because I am similar to my brother. My job is similar to that of attorneys Proustarian Tree. Human beings are similar in many ways to bonobo chimps. Similar does not mean same, it does not mean equal. It means similar. So I think that the regulatory scheme that we have for marijuana is quite similar to that of alcohol. I don't think that means that we need to have the same number or even a close number of licenses. As to the point about, you know, does it make a difference if we have four or eight? Two things. One, one is, we don't know, but presumably number has at least some effect, because otherwise we wouldn't have a cap on our liquor licenses either. It presumably has at least some effect when you have more rather than less. But I'd also like to say, I feel President Kishmeric was quite correct in saying that the people who are already seeking this out, whether it's because they're addicted or because they just are current users, they're already in the market, they're going to buy it wherever they can buy it. The place where I think there's at least the possibility that the number might make a difference is in terms of new entrants to the market. a difference is in terms of new entrants to the market. You know, if something is all over the place, you're much more likely to try it out than if it's only in a few locations so that you have to actually make a conscious choice to travel there and make a purchase. Now again, I'm not presuming anything about whether this will ultimately turn out to be a disaster or not. It may very well be that all the reassurances I've received will turn out to be true, and I really hope that's the case. But the reason that I'm in favor of staying at a lower number is not just for control of the market or even of the direct effects, it's also because staying at a lower number gives us a chance to use those first four as test subjects essentially for how the regulations work. The various things that we require them to do to limit transfer to children, to provide security, to provide for testing and purity and whatnot. We can see if they work for those four, and if they do, we can expand out. The more licenses we grant, if it turns out that our regulations are not correct, that we've made a mistake somewhere in how we're regulating this, the more widespread it is, the harder it will be to fix any mistakes we've made. So again, I'm not taking a hard line here and saying we should be, you know, cracking down on this to the maximum extent at some point in the future. I may take that tack if it turns out that it's as bad as, you know, people worry it might be. At some point, I might say, what the heck were we worried about? I don't know. But I'm saying it's a lot easier to apply the brake than, rather, to apply the gas than to apply the brake. So let's take it a bit at a time, take the three that we've already just about got and the one that's coming down the pipeline, see how it goes. That's all. Just see how it goes, and then make our decision from there. That's all.
Counselor Gina Tally.
My question is, we have eight licenses that we've allowed. How many establishments in the city can you buy alcohol from?
Approximately 80.
Eighty?
Between consumption and commercial. Yes.
So 80 versus eight. I think that's not similar. That's not even the same. I just want to point that out. And I keep hearing words tonight about we made a mistake, or we'll see if we made a mistake. We didn't make any mistake. We did not do this unilaterally. I can't stress this enough to everybody. This was the will of the people. We did not wake up one day and say, let's have Fitchburg be the marijuana capital of Massachusetts. Okay? This came on our front doorstep because of what the voters wanted, and I disagree with my colleague across the aisle, I honestly, in my opinion, don't think it's going to make a difference whether it's four or eight. Because the ills that have been cited, the societal impacts that have been cited, and I'm not saying they're wrong, I'm sure some of it may be right. It's going to exist, no matter how many you have here. There are products that I use for hobbies that I can't get in the city of Fitchburg. But if I'm that invested in it and I want it that badly, I'm going to make every effort to go get it. Whether there's four or eight in the city, it's not going to make a difference. The people in this room, and the 43% who voted no, you could make an argument, don't want it, period. And that's not possible. So I'm not pretending I know what the 57% wanted when they voted for it, and I can't assume they didn't read the ballot question. I can't assume that. I have to assume they did read it. I have to assume the voters did their research on the pros and the cons with all the TV advertisements that went on, the pamphlets that were passed out from both the pro and the con side, and they voted. I'm not going to go into this, and I'm not saying anybody said this, I'm not going to go into this thinking the voters were ignorant and they just went like this and said yes. I mean, I've got to assume they made some type of an effort to understand what they were voting for. But again, if people feel that strongly about this subject, there is a way to get out of it. That is a ballot question, a local referendum that any citizen in this city can initiate and get signatures for. And then the people of this city will vote again if that comes to it, and then they can rethink their last vote, and if the vote is the same, it's the same. If it's not, it's not. We will do, as a city government, whatever the people want in this regard. That's the way to get out of this. I think the four versus eight is a moot point. That's not what this is about. It's about eight or four versus zero. That's what people want, is zero. Well, there's only one way to get there: the ballot. Nothing we can do about it. Recreational marijuana, whether you like it or not, is here to stay in Fitchburg until and if the public votes no and reverses their decision two years ago. I cannot stress that enough. Thank you.
I just have two short points, based on everything that I've heard. When we're talking about the four locations that we have, and talking about them being like superpowers, when we have eight, then, you know, since we have four already down the line, you know, one thing we don't have is an economic empowerment applicant. So these are members of the communities disproportionately criminalized from marijuana, and the point is to ensure diversity in the cannabis market. So right now, you know, we have four larger corporations that have applied for our licenses, whereas if we have four more available, we might have that opportunity for an economic empowerment applicant as a priority applicant with the state. And then going also on that theme, we have many community host agreements that have been negotiated by the mayor that are very lucrative to the city, and they benefit to a large portion of funds, hundreds of thousands of dollars, to community relations boards that would distribute that funds every year to local charities. And that would help to lessen the concern of community impact. So I would urge the public to start thinking about how we can use those funds to lessen the concerns that we have that have been addressed tonight. Thank you.
Matters before the counsel.
Motion to give leave to withdraw, 282-18, 283-18.
I have a motion and second to give leave to withdraw to 282-18 and 283-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor of giving leave to withdraw, hands raised, All those in opposition.
Wait, 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 please.
There's just one in opposition. Counselor Zarella. One in opposition, Counselor Zarella. Motion carries, 10 to 1, 9 to 1, excuse me. I want to just take the opportunity and just thank those who came this evening and expressed in a very respectful and impassioned way how they felt about a matter, and, you know, in speaking to the council. I know this wasn't the outcome you were expecting, but I appreciate, and I'll speak on behalf of the entire council, we appreciate when citizens come before us and express passion and come at it from an educated and respectful standpoint. So thank you for your involvement. Again, I know this wasn't the outcome you were expecting, but we appreciate what you've done for our community. And so please keep at it. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we'll hear a report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the report from the Committee on Records. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the mayor, there are three letters of appointments this evening. The first is for Michaela Wakefield as an associate member of the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire November 1st, 2019. The second for Ms. Glenn Daly Lowes as a member of the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire November 1st, 2021. And the following, Fitchburg State University Police Officers to serve as special officers for the City of Fitchburg. Just before I continue, I realize there's a number of folks who want to talk. I apologize, we have to continue on the agenda. I'd ask that you carry conversations out in the hall. Thank you. For the following members, Lieutenant Robert H. Gilman, Sergeant Paul R. Valley, officers Ernie R. Fontaine, Justin Lawler, Aaron Considine, Naomi Gale, Hector Martinez Rivera, Kevin Marty Osia, Steve, sorry, Seen Prive, Alexa Morgan, and Richard Rossi. We'll send those to the Appointments Committee. We also have communications this evening from Ann M. Cervantes, City Treasurer, as well as another communication from the Reserve Investment Management Board, which we'll place on file in the City's Clerk's Office. Moving on to the agenda, we now have a special presentation from Waste Management. Good evening, and I apologize for the delay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, the council. My name is Ed Pasick with Waste Management, with Public Sector Solutions.
If I could just interject for a second. Councilors, back budget season, councilors expressed quite a few concerns at that time about curbside collection. With me is Ed Pasick, as he's already introduced himself, and also Matt Hill, who is in operations for Waste Management. They are here to address those concerns. You may proceed.
Sure. So first of all, you know, we had a few things on the agenda that we wanted to discuss with the council. So as Steve mentioned, you know, apparently there were some concerns in the past. We also want to talk about some of the opportunities that we've taken to partner with the city as far as recycling goes, and some very important topics as far as contamination reduction. So I guess I'll start off with that, and then maybe we can move into some of the service concerns as maybe you've experienced, and we'd be happy to address those as we move forward. So first of all, as some of the councilors may be aware, there's been a worldwide crisis in recycling initiated by China and some regulations that have taken place there. It's impacted us here locally by basically crashing the commodity markets and increasing significant, significantly increasing expense to our operating costs, not just our operating costs, but all the operators throughout the state and the nation. So this twofold effect has combined to threaten the future of recycling throughout, really, our whole community here, our state and beyond. So, you know, obviously, we live in a time when sustainability is a key value, and what we're up against right now is trying to find a way to move forward and keep recycling alive into the future for us and our children. So as we do this, some of the important challenges that we face are overcoming contamination. Contaminated recycling is at the heart of a lot of these issues that we face, and just so the council realizes this is quite an in-depth topic. I'm trying to keep it very brief in the interest of everybody's time here. And so the city, so one of the things that we've gotten involved with the city is Board of Health Department had reached out to the Mass DEP and has partnered with them to engage in a program called Recycling IQ, standing for Improved Quality. And so throughout this summer and into the fall, the Board of Health Department and partnered, we've partnered with them to support, has been going through the streets of Fitchburg, flipping lids, inspecting containers, and trying to do everything that we can to reduce contamination. Part of the effort involved an audit of the material that was generated by the residents of Fitchburg through the curbside recycling program, and that's one way that we helped support the city in this. And we did this audit, we diverted a few loads to our Lemonsor Transfer Station and physically hand-sorted some of these loads. And after we did 11 loads, we felt we were, had a significant, statistically significant sample size where we could make an evaluation and say that the city's recycling was contaminated at a rate of about 44%. That's significant. I realize that people may not have a background in this, but, you know, really where we need to be is about 5% to 10%. So 40% is sort of like an unsustainable rate. So at that point, we've gotten some great support from the Board of Health, and we've tried to reciprocate that as well by working with Steve and his agents out on the streets with our drivers, in some cases rejecting material carts. And so if you ever, you may have been familiar with some calls and concerns from constituents who may have asked, like, why, you know, why was my cart left behind? Or maybe they're asking about a tag that may have been, they may have found there. And so that's part of the effort that we have ongoing right now to try to educate and to enforce on this important topic. So we continue through the program, and now we, I think this year's Recycling IQ program is wrapped up, and actually, I was pleased to have Counselor Squallia join us this morning at the Lemonsor Transfer Station as we concluded a, we're doing our concluding audits right now to see, to measure the impact of the project. So right now, we're in the midst of the audit. It's multiple audits over, again, over 11 different loads we want to sample. So I'm not prepared to share the results yet, but we're optimistic that they will improve, and hopefully that the city's efforts will bear some fruit. But either way, I just certainly wanted to bring this very important topic to everybody's attention and let you know that it's something that we are doing our best to address. So with that said, I guess I'd be happy to open up our small panel here to any questions related to anything Waste Management.
Director Curry, we can do this two different ways. We can separate recycling from pickup, or we can do both presentations and then field questions simultaneously.
I think we can do it simultaneously.
Okay. All right. So we'll jump into measures taken for pickup? Is that correct?
Sure. Absolutely. If you had, I mean, if you had a question.
We have, just about everyone's going to have a question, so I'm going to let you jump in, and then we'll go from there.
Directly related to what he just spoke about, if I can ask a quick question.
Sure.
So when it comes to you auditing the recyclables, not everybody has a computer, not everybody knows what goes in there, what doesn't go in there. Have you thought about putting stickers on everybody's barrels so they know what's supposed to be in there and what's not supposed to be on there? Most of this is education.
Of course. You know, I mean, and that's one of the, that's one of the goals of our project, is to try to educate people, and admittedly, it's a challenge because not everybody accesses the same media, and so the question becomes, how do you, how do you get the message out to everybody? So I believe the city has taken some steps to try to use some different avenues to get the message out there, and I think the big message that we've been trying to put on everybody's, in front of everybody, is no bags, trying to emphasize that single point because on our end, that's probably the singular most important point. But to your question directly, have we put a sticker on every single barrel, or would we? Some communities do have that as a program. There's, in some cases, it's even molded into the plastic as to what's allowable and what isn't. That's certainly something that we could explore with the Board of Health, and if that's something that, you know, maybe is felt strongly by the council, we could certainly move forward with a recommendation like that.
We have actually have done that, and we have found that the sticker didn't last very long. The weather wore them out very quickly. So to search for another avenue to maintain those stickers is where we're at.
Thank you. I'm going to have us jump in first with the pickup, and then...
Okay, Mr. President, you're running the show.
You will have an opportunity to ask as many questions as you see fit, councilors.
All right. So again, my name's Matt Hill. I'm District Manager of Collection Operations for Waste Management, so along with the city. I oversee trash collection for about two-thirds of the state, give or take. So with that, I know there have been in the past issues with collection within the city. That's trash recycle, yard waste, you know, there's weather, you know, there's a lot of challenges. I took over in my role about a year ago, and it has taken this long to get to where we are now, which I believe, and I think Steve would concur, we're much better now than we were this time last year. With regard to staffing, trucks, so some of the things implemented, obviously boosting staffing, I'm still doing that. It takes approximately, depending on how quick somebody picks it up, about 600 hours to train a driver in trash collection, believe it or not. It's actually, I mean, you have a 70,000-pound truck that has 10,000 moving parts. It's a lot to keep track of. So bolstering their staffing is something we're doing to address concerns. Dumping a lot of money, a lot of the trucks that I inherited when I took my position were in disrepair, constantly breaking down, and I'm not going to tell you that they're not going to break down in the future, it's just the nature of the beast. The trucks do a lot of work in the city. Our truck manufacturer, the body manufacturer, are actually in the New England area. The city of Fitchburg does the second-most lifts of any other city that this company does, and they, I mean, there's only a few trash truck makers in the world, so they're dealing with everybody.
Lifts?
Lifts. So that's, the arm comes out, lifts the cart, puts it down. So I have three trucks, automated... So, I have three trucks, automated trucks in the city, and they do approximately 1,300 to 1,500 lifts a day, five days a week. The City of Lynn is the only city that does more lifts, and it's only by about 100. So, those trucks are working. I mean, they're, we're doing everything that they're supposed to do, but they do wear out. So, trucks are an issue. Getting new capital, which is something that I am getting, getting new trucks are coming in. Trucks are made to order, so it does take some time, unfortunately. Trust me, I'm not any happier about it than anybody else, because I wish they would just get delivered to my door. We've also installed, about a month ago, promoted a driver, took a while to find him. He's essentially a street supervisor, he's a driver, he does a route in Pittsburgh, but he's a direct liaison with Steve and the management team. And essentially, what it means is, is that while he's coordinating things on the street, missed pickups, you know, physical inspections, right? Somebody calls in and says, hey, you know, there's nothing wrong with my recycling, you know, Waste Management just didn't come pick it up. So, Eric is his name. I mean, we send Eric right over, he'll personally inspect it, he'll give you the green light or the red light, depending on, you know, the condition of the container, immediately communicates that to Steve so that we know, okay, listen, it was good, should have been picked up, was, you know, tagged incorrectly, we took it, or, no, it was tagged, it's definitely contaminated, we're not touching it. So, with Eric, misses are down, because essentially, he also knows, it falls on his shoulders. I mean, I pay him to make sure that nobody leaves town without things getting picked up. Now, again, I know there's been some issues with, with some of the yard waste this year. Feel like the fall has been better than the spring. Again, misses are down. There are still some that occur, and that, in the fall, has more to do with the newer staff coming in, because while we've trained them on driving the trucks and operating the trucks and maneuvering through the streets, there's still some bugs that have to get worked out with regard to the subjectivity of what is and isn't acceptable. So, we have basically them judging what is or isn't, you know, say like a cart full of dirt, you know, is that yard waste or not? Stuff like that. So, we're working towards getting better. Again, to be completely frank, I kind of, you know, took on a large mess when I took over in this Waste Management facility, but again, I think we're, we're making headway. It's probably not as fast as everybody would like, but I can assure you, it's not for a lack of effort or work ethic on our part.
Councilor, just to reiterate, communication was definitely an issue a year ago. Be careful what I ask for. Now, I receive about 100 text messages, about 200 emails a day from Waste Management staff on items that are rejected or items that are an issue that we need to address. So, communication has greatly improved.
So, councilors, I know there's, most of you have raised your hand. Before we do that, I'm just going to ask one thing. I know we each, particularly us ward councilors, we each have those areas. Please do not, for example, throw out, you know, why am I having a specific issue at 33 Garnet Street? You know, I'd prefer that you address that individually with Director Curry. Please use this opportunity to talk, you know, kind of generally about the issues and questions, but the specific individual issues, I'd ask that you, you do so offline out of the meeting. That said, first on the list is Counselor Green.
I do want to take this time to commend the effort that has been made, especially in the last year, because my phone calls are down on missed. So, I appreciate that, and I want you to know that. It is not, it's a tough industry. This is a tough city. If you've ever rode along in the winter with the plow drivers, you would have to imagine what it would be equally difficult as a trash collector. I, is that, I guess, right, trash collector? So, I want to commend the effort that has been done in improving, because there's always room for improvement. Are you able to speak yet on what, as the City of Pittsburgh, only the City of Pittsburgh, what our number-one contaminant would be that you're finding the most issue with?
Yes, I could definitely speak to that. So, as far as quantity goes, it might be difficult to quantify it exactly, but as far as the issue, you know, you asked what we have the biggest issue with, and that would be bags. So, whether it's plastic bags that are just empty and discarded into the recycling, or whether it's bags of recycling, or I hate to say it, but bags of trash that end up in the recycling, that's the number-one issue. And if you wanted to kind of consider this as related to that, I would also say, like, any kind of film, plastic film that is used as a wrapping material, a great example would be if you were to purchase like a case of Poland Spring Water, and it comes in like a plastic wrap, that wrap that comes around the case is not recyclable, at least in our curbside program. Maybe one thing that's important to put out there to the council in general is that just about any item could be recycled in some manner, shape, or form, okay? But it doesn't necessarily mean that it's appropriate for a curbside recycling program. And I think a good example that makes, would be scrap metal. We all know that metal is a desirable product to be recycled, you could bring it to a scrap metal location, they'd be happy to have it. But if you take brake drums, for example, and throw them in your curbside cart, and that ends up in our recycling facility, that's going to, it could hurt our employees, it could damage our equipment, because our equipment at our sorting facilities is set up to handle things like food containers and bottles and cans and that type of thing. It's a conveyor-driven system, which is also another reason why we have such issues and difficulty taking plastic bags and plastic wraps. So, you imagine, really like, really like a manufacturing facility, that everything's driven on belts and conveyors with all these rotating parts, and anything that is a plastic bag or a film will get wrapped in those parts. Another issue we have is what we call tanglers, like hoses, or people put, you'd be surprised how many people throw away their Christmas lights in the recycling, or even items with cords, you know, a power cord. So, those are things that tangle up our systems. We have to shut down our facility regularly. About 20% of our operating time is actually spent as downtime detangling our systems. So, as I mentioned earlier, the, we have a recycling crisis. Part of that crisis is created by a lack of capacity in the, in our, in the industry's ability to process materials. When we lose 20% of every day to take, take out bags and tanglers, we, we as a, as a community, and I mean like as a state, as an industry, lose the ability to process recycles, recyclables in a significant way. So, I'd say that's a really big one, bags and tanglers.
To follow up on that, knowing that every apartment or household gets a water bill, would you ever consider or take on a possibility of submitting in a water bill those particular things in both English and Spanish?
Absolutely.
To just, because it is all about education. I mean, I, I will tell you that I was an offender, because I would put our pellet bags in the recycle, because I saw the little pet sign that said it's recyclable, and then it wasn't until Mr. Curry, thank God I didn't get a ticket, but, because I thought I was doing, I was doing a good thing, because I was keeping it out of the landfill by putting it in recycle, but until he explained to me that the rotary type of claw that comes in and shreds that apart has the potential to tangle and damage it. So, those now go, unfortunately, to the landfill, because we don't have the ability to recycle everything that could be recyclable. Knowing that, then, will we ever get to a place up at our landfill, which I realize is filling up daily, we are going to reach capacity soon, where, like, we would bring our dried latex paint and those types of hazardous items that we can't put in recycle and aren't picked up at curbside? But would we have a place to put the, you know, the wrappers, the bags, that potentially outside of our area could be recycled, that just aren't for curbside recycling?
Yeah, sure. It's a great question. So, one thing I'd be, I'd encourage everybody to do is to refer people to a lot of retail locations, so I'm not sure exactly, you know, which supermarkets in the city would...
Market Basket.
Market Basket, yeah. But typically, most, most supermarkets will take back not only the, the plastic bags that they use to bag their items, but they'll also take back other bags and other plastic films that could be recycled. So, even though they're not compatible with our curbside program, or pretty much curbside programs across the state, it's not just Waste Management, there are outlets that are in every, pretty much every community for those. So, probably your pellet bags, too, you could look into that.
Okay, thank you, because again, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
We've all been there, so we've learned, everybody here has learned quite a bit in the last year about recycling.
If I could add really quickly, if folks sign onto the Health Department webpage, there is a recollect app on there, and you can ask, you can type in whatever the item is that you wish to recycle, to see if that is a recycled item, whether it goes in your trash, or how to dispose, how to dispose items. I encourage the folks to take a look at that and sign up for that app. It also carries a calendar that goes along with it to remind you of pickups and things like that.
Okay.
And household has its waste areas, you mentioned paint.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Dana Tally.
So, you gentlemen were called in because we had one hell of a year last year. I've been here 11 years, it was the worst year I've ever experienced. You probably know this, but when, I don't know what it is, but if the trash or recycling isn't picked up, it's DEFCON 5 for the resident, where they're in a, they're in a literal state of panic. I'm not mocking them, I'm being serious, because, for recycling especially, because it's a two-week period. And we're not talking one, we're talking whole streets. I know we had a very ridiculously bad winter, and I know we have terrain in this city where the hills are just unlike any other, makes it difficult. But there needs to be a better way of communicating to the public through social media, through email, well, from the Board of Health's office or from you guys, some way that we can try to get out to the press and to the council and whoever else can, can make these points known in a timely manner. If there is a problem you foresee, let us know. If there is an issue that you stumble, that you come across while picking up, let us know, and I know you do, but there was an issue with communication in the last year or two, where people would have whole streets missed, and most of them are understanding of the fact, well, you know, we'll give another day or two. It would take three, four, five days. They start worrying that you guys just missed them entirely and you're not coming, and we have no information to tell them, well, two trucks broke down, or this driver is sick, or this driver got, we have nothing to tell them. It makes us look incompetent as a city. And we, I, I have never called Steve Curry as much as I have last year. I have his cell phone number programmed into my brain. I mean, how many times I had to call him last year, saying, this street was missed, this street was missed. It wasn't one or two, it was whole streets. And there were some places that waited weeks, weeks to get picked up. I have the photos to prove it, but there needs to be better communication, because the public is understanding if they know what's going on. When they don't know what's going on, it doesn't make, well, it makes you guys look bad, but it makes us look bad as the, as the customer, because we can't tell our constituents why their trash is still sitting out there five, six, seven days after it was supposed to get picked up. So, I'd be interested to know, or get an understanding either tonight or in a future correspondence, what is the procedure? What is the procedure right now that we're implementing, where we have a route to be done, and let's say a truck breaks down? What happens? The driver contacts Central Office at Waste Management, says, truck's down, we gotta, we gotta haul it? What's the communication channel between the driver that experiences a problem, and how does it get to Mr. Curry's office and then gets to the public?
So, I can at least speak to how it gets to me and then to Steve. So, driver has an issue on road, truck is down. Immediately dispatch a mechanic, head up there, is it a quick fix, or is it towable, right? Are you going to get towed in? If you're towed in, we do have spare trucks, you know, if it, if it's possible, depending on what time the breakdown happens, jump into a spare and you're right back en route. Yeah, you're going to have some downtime, but then there's three other guys in the city to help, you know, pick you up. Say it's a, you know, it's catastrophic, right, and we can't get the rest of the route covered or back out. So, truck gets towed in, we immediately communicate to Steve, hey, so-and-so is down, so, and he knows the routes, so this section, he knows this section isn't going to be completed. You know, we game plan, okay, this is what we're going to do tomorrow, extra truck tomorrow, you know, for cleanup.
So, it's the day of? The day when it happens, you communicate to Steve, this is what's going on?
Yeah.
At least that's what's going on now. I could tell you a few, last year, it took Steve three or four days to figure out what was going on.
Yeah, yep, and that was part of the thing. So, there were some, with the, the actual driver staffing in Pittsburgh, turned it over. Basically, there was just some bad apples that had to go.
Okay.
So, and then with the promotion of the street supervisor, it's just another level of also, one, communication, and two, basically just getting the job done.
So, you had staffing issues last year. I'm trying to understand, so the public watching can understand what took place, because, like I said, I didn't have an issue with you guys really for nine years, but last year, for whatever reason, it was like a perfect storm. I recall talking to Steve, there were personnel issues, there was also, I guess, a ridiculous amount of truck breakdowns last year?
Yep, yep. So, basically, the fleet was ignored. Prior to my coming into the site, I mean, it was ignored, bottom line. You know, the fleet manager was turned over, he's in charge of all the mechanics, gone, my predecessor, gone.
Well, I'm glad to see that they're, they've cleaned house and are trying, or are rectifying the issue, because, you know, we pay a lot of money for the service we provide.
Absolutely, and you deserve the best. That's what we, we pride ourselves on, providing the best service, and you deserve it.
And again, our, our residents are understanding people, that when they, when they were told in advance, expect the delay, not one person had a problem with it, because they understood why. Truck broke down, person is out sick, whatever. It was those instances, and there were many of them where apparel's out there for a week, and we can't tell them what's going on.
Sure.
And so, I'm glad to hear, so clearly, there was something that took place last year that was not usually the norm, that Waste Management has acknowledged and is correcting, and that's good to hear. And my only other question or comment is on the yard waste. Just today, I got a couple of calls about yard waste not being picked up. Is it fair to say, or is it true to say, that there's a different truck for the yard waste?
Yes.
And I was told, I think Mr. Curry told me this last year, for the residents watching, if their yard waste is significantly delayed, I was told that there could be a resident who's got 20 barrels outside their house, or 20 bags outside their house, 25, a ton of yard waste. And I was told, after a few houses with that kind of a level, the truck gets full, and they have to go all the way to dump it and then get back on schedule. So, is that a fair assessment of why yard waste is typically, I'm telling you, it's been, it was worse than trash and recycling. Yard waste is the worst. But I'm trying to explain to people if it's accurate, it's because if you've got one or two houses that have a ton of yard waste, that could fill up a truck pretty quickly after a couple of streets, and then it takes time for them to go and dump it, come back, and then if there's more houses with a ton of waste, they got to dump it and come back. Is that the reason why there's always a delay with yard waste? Because the amount being collected?
Yes. And I can tell you, I mean, volume is up fall to fall, about 25%.
So, are we adding trucks to, you guys adding trucks? Is it a matter of staff needs to increase?
So, when we can, it's, it is, it's staff. Again, I'm still in the midst of building staffing. You know, I have, we have a training center in Florida, right? I have two guys down in Florida right now. So, it's just a matter of getting them up to speed. From a truck standpoint, there are only a finite amount of trucks. That being said, typically, last fall, you know, from a volume standpoint, one truck a day was enough to hold the volume. It is compounded a little bit this year as far as the speed of pickup, because everything's wet. So, you know, bags fall apart, whether they're, even if, you know, if we're, if we're there, you know, people put their yard waste out in the big paper bags on Sunday, and we're there on their collection day on Monday, but it rains all day Sunday and all day Monday. You know, they pick up a bag, it falls apart, they have shoved, they have to now shovel it all into the truck.
Okay. So, at what point, at what point do we, as councilors, raise the alarm bell with Steve if someone's not getting picked? I mean, how many days? I mean, if you guys have a day or two delay, I understand that with all the stuff that you've talked about, but when do we get concerned with the yard waste? How long do we tell a resident, keep it out there, and don't bother Board of Health until, I mean, how many days would you think? Two days? I'm asking, because again, today, someone asked me, it's not picked up, it was supposed to be picked up Wednesday.
If folks would sign up for either See Click Fix, Recollect, or both, that's how I send my notices out, I also put it on the webpage, but all missed collections are reported on See Click Fix, so residents can check and see them. And I encourage that, because I'm receiving, I'm buried with calls, and I can only handle so many calls a day, but with See Click Fix, it's, it's trackable, and it can be entered, and it, that See Click Fix actually gets directly reported to Waste Management.
Well, I hope, I hope the volume of calls to your office goes down, because you don't have a large staff.
See Click Fix has helped that.
And what triggered this discussion with you gentlemen is, we have... And what triggered this discussion with you gentlemen is, we have Board of Health staff, two clerks, that sometimes I want to say they're Waste Management employees. At least last year they were. They were on the phone with you guys constantly. They weren't doing Board of Health, they were doing track, Waste Man, I almost wanted to say to Steve, when are we gonna get reimbursed for their salary last year? They should be wearing Waste Management vests. So I'm hoping it's not the case this coming winter, because one president joked to me, are you ready for, you know, the impending storm? I go, what do you mean? Well, it's the start of winter soon, because of last winter. So I want to tell them, that's why I want you to get this out here now, that was a, hopefully unplanned, that was, that was a one-off, that was, that was an anomaly. That's not the norm. You guys have recognized there were major issues, and you're correcting on a new leadership.
Correct.
And I'm encouraged to hear that. And I thank you for coming here before us tonight. Other than that, when we got hit with the $175,000 fee for the recycling pickup through the contract, which we weren't hit for, for 20 years, even though you guys could have charged us, it couldn't have come at a worse time, when you guys asked for the money. And that's also what compounded this discussion was, with the constituent base saying, wow, not a very good job with pickups last year, and now Waste Management is sticking us with a $175,000 bill, that they could have done years ago, but now all of a sudden, this is the year they decide to hit us with it. So it was like, it was a two-pronged attack on us, to say, what are these guys kidding me? I mean, you're gonna squeeze us for $175 after the service we got? So that's why you guys are here, it was just a perfect storm last year. And again, like I said, 10 years, didn't have this problem. But last year, and as you explained, was terrible. And I'm glad to hear it's acknowledged, and being rectified. I hope people are paying attention. And I myself am guilty, as Counselor Green was a couple of years ago, throwing the plastic bags in the trash, because I have nice neighbors next to me, who looked at me and go, why are you putting that in the trash? Put it in recycle. I go, what do you mean? Oh, there's a little recycling thing on the bag here, it says recycle. I go, you can't. Why? Oh, well, because that, it doesn't go into the machine, well. And they go, well, that's confusing, because like you guys said, everything you get now has got a recycling sticker on it. So education is key, but the communication would be huge improvement in letting us know in advance, so we can tell people, don't panic, don't be alarmed, you know, a couple of days, they're okay with it, but after a week, it gets to be like, what is going on? So I'm glad to see it's being, being rectified. Thank you.
Counsel Fleming.
I guess we sort of have to clarify what is considered contamination. Is it just the wrong item being put into the recycling, or is it also items that have not been cleaned?
It could actually be a little bit of both. Primarily, what we're seeing, like we said before, is the bags and the tanglers, that's kind of the area of focus. But it's a great question, because food waste is another area that can become, it's a contaminant, contaminant in and of itself, but it also creates a cross-contamination issue. So if somebody were to dispose of a plastic bottle that was half-full of soda, and that ends up in the load, well, the intention may be, you know, fair intention, because it's a plastic bottle. But when that soda gets compacted in the truck, and spreads to all the cardboard and paper in there, now that soda has ruined material that would otherwise be perfectly fine. So, I mean, you know, we don't need people to run their, you know, bottles and cans through the dishwasher. I say that, but it's only half in jest, it does happen. Some people are very dedicated to the cause, but it's not necessary. Basically, what we're looking for is a level where there wouldn't be food that would kind of fall out, or, you know, just mingle with the other materials. So that's kind of the level of cleanliness that we're looking for.
So with that being said, would that be the reason why pizza boxes are not allowed in recycle, but cardboard is?
It's funny that you should bring that up. So that was a question that came up this morning at today's audit. And recently, in light of the crisis with recycling that I, that I mentioned earlier, the state, and specifically the DEP, has kind of gotten together with the recycling plant operators of the state, and they've come up with a, what we call a universal list. So that universal list is applicable, not just to the city of Pittsburgh, or to Waste Management customers, but to every single recycle, every single curbside recycler in the whole state. And on that list, it was agreed upon that pizza boxes would be acceptable, as long as they didn't have any food in them. So as long as the pizza wasn't still in the box, all right, or as long as it wasn't covered in cheese. But the grease, which inevitably kind of sinks into the cardboard, which we've always been told previously we didn't want, now is allowed, okay? So I mean, that's a little bit of a relaxation, actually, in the policy. So, you know, I think we could probably see a little bit less rejection on, on those items, but certainly we want to keep up the focus on the bags and things like that.
And how do you know which barrels have the contaminant? Is there a camera when you are dumping the barrel?
There's a camera, it's called a hopper, where the trash gets dumped. There's a hopper camera, yep, so as the, as the driver's dumping the cart, he can generally see what comes out. Also, you know, there's some carts you pull up alongside, ones that I have tagged, air conditioners in them, carpet.
TVs.
TVs. I mean, you know, the lids are popped up, and somebody like ripped up all the carpet out of their house, and just rolled it all up and put it in the recycling toter. So sometimes it's very visible, as you're pulling up, and other times, yeah, it'll be, it'll be something that's on the, they'll see on the camera. Occasionally, what we have the drivers now doing, if you get to a multi-family home, or multi-tenant establishment, where you have, whatever, 20 toters lined up, just hop out real quick, and just start flipping lids a little bit, just to get an idea of what's what, when you're dealing with that kind of volume. So it's really, it's, we're combating it every way we can. And it's just a matter of, you know, getting the carts clean, is really the goal.
Well, I am guilty of putting the wrong items in the recycle, and I'm just thankful I never got tagged yet.
We have all your addresses.
God, man, the cameras are scary.
Counsel Boshman.
Pick up, and then we get to recycle. Steve and I talked, what is, there's a new thing now you're going around, the lid, does it have to be completely shut? Can it be that much open? I understand you can't take it when it's way open, and you got a bag on top. But I seen times when I drive around, that you lift, you left barrels, yet the lid was open that much, from the thing. And I brought that to your attention. I don't, you said not to say the street, and I won't say the street. So I said, what is your rules?
Communication has improved so much now, that we're able to work together daily. Right now, what's happening is, any barrel that is overflowing, if I might back up a minute, our city ordinance states that lids, that the reason why we put barrels on the street was to clean up the city. So if the lids aren't closed, we're not accomplishing what we set out to do. So basically, our city ordinance says that the lids need to be closed. And now that communication has improved so much, we're able to work together. Barrels that have the potential, in the dumping process, to spill all over the ground, that are so overflowing, are rejected. Waste Management is sending us a picture of the rejected barrel. And at that time, we are sending a letter to the owner, we have started with just warnings. Three weeks ago, we started with warnings, just to educate people that your barrel's overflowing, and you need to take steps, whether that is to purchase a landfill pass, or rent an additional barrel, which is $100 a year, to take care of the overflow. And, and we were issuing free passes to the landfill for that overflow. But any barrel that had the potential to spill on the ground during the dumping process was rejected. Any barrel that has been overflowing, they'll take a picture of it, and still dump it. So it was a little bit more manageable to enforce on our end. And that effort is still going on. Now, at some point, we're gonna get a little bit more strict, especially for those, we have several offenders that just continue and continue, and try not to fix the problem. Those folks will be, start receiving fines at some point.
Okay, now, you said that, Counsel across the aisle, went down to your place that you had the recycling. My question is, how do we know it's just Pittsburgh recycling? I see your trucks all over the state, so how do we know it's just Pittsburgh going to that place that you're, you're bringing it, and it's all our problems, that there's a recycling problem, and it's all plastic bags from Pittsburgh?
I can actually speak to that. So we have, you know, four assigned trucks to the city on any given day. So when we set up the audit, it's 11 loads, so it's two drivers per day, and then we get a third driver in on a particular day. So typically, your trash goes to the landfill, and your recycling goes to Harvey Recycling, actually, in Pittsburgh. But what we do is, we take those 11 loads, specifically, those truck numbers, those drivers, we divert them to Leominster Transfer Station, our transfer station to Leominster. And we have a segregated area of the transfer station, that nobody else is allowed to dump in for these audits. So we take those trucks individually, into that specified area, dump them, and then that's where the hand sorting starts. So they are, there's, it's no chance of, you know, whoever, Sterling's trash ending, or recycling ending up in Pittsburgh, or Concord's ending up in Pittsburgh. It's a dedicated area when we do the audits, and it's, you know, direct communication between me and the drivers on that day, whose loads are gonna be audited.
I'd like to add something to that, too. So we also have GPS on all of our trucks, so if there was ever a question, or if anybody had a serious concern, that, you know, maybe there was some cross-mingling between Pittsburgh and another community, we could pull up on GPS, and you could see a breadcrumb map of all the streets that that truck traveled down. So we could always, you know, kind of verify that, if there was any concerns.
Okay, now, and you said on the recycling, picking up leaves trash, that if the bag literally breaks, your driver goes out and picks up the leaves that are on the sidewalk? They do?
That's what they're supposed to do.
By the contract. Jeez, throw the wrong guy that. They didn't do that in my ward, but...
He's gonna measure it down to the leaf now, he shouldn't have said that.
I mean, that's what they're, that's what they're supposed to do. I mean, now, I can't say...
Well, there's some reason, obviously.
Right, I mean, you know, for, you know...
And my last final question, because I know it's getting late, my final question to you is this, if people are calling up, and they call the Board of Health, and they pay their $10, $15, or $20 to pick up furniture, and they put a big couch out there, and they get it, they say, you guys say, they're told, have the couch out there, they're gonna pick it up Thursday, you guys don't show up. It's a long weekend, and we get a snowstorm coming. The woman had to hire somebody to put the couch out there, now you tell her to go and pick up the couch, and bring it back inside, and put it out the following week. So they sat out there, ooh, good, good month, a good month. I had to go and move it with my truck, and push it way out in the street, so you guys could come up and pick it up. And that was last year. And I, you know, I said, why didn't they pick it up in the first time? I see numerous places where they call up, and all they pay Steve the money to Board of Health, and they say you're gonna come this certain day, and it's there for days on end. On the big bulk items, couches, TVs...
Counsel, as to last winter, I honestly, I can't give you an answer. You know, honest and true.
I can say it was back to the communication issue, and there was some communication issues on our end, too. Sometimes, and I do recall that issue that you're discussing, there were occasions, and when I did a little research, found that some of those bulk items may not have landed in their lap on the, on the list, for whatever reason. So I don't want these gentlemen to sit here and take all the blame. There was some problems on my end as well, in our office, so...
And my final question. I watch the stop bike, and I watch Waste Management, and they're doing pretty good. So why not, you know, you're talking about the truck breaking down, and you had a hard time. You know, if you're using the equipment as much as you claim you're doing, so many times a day, so many times a year, five days a week, I'm going in there, why aren't we replacing them maybe two, or three, or four, or five years? If you're making good money, because you're filling up that landfill, I shoot trucks from up Route 2, like there's no tomorrow. I mean, it's supposed to be Pittsburgh's landfill.
Unfortunately, the landfill money has nothing to do with me.
We, we have been replacing the arms, so all the arms are on a, we have a preventative maintenance plan, and I'm not exactly sure what the schedule for the arms is, but they're, because of the frequency of use, and, I mean, they just wear out, so...
About once a year right now, for the Pittsburgh trucks, so they were all replaced when I first took over, and we're in the process of replacing them all right now.
And my final thing is this, if you're having a big turnover, you're having a big turnover, why don't you pay a little bit more money, and you won't have that turnover?
We, we actually, it's sort of an endemic situation right now, across the whole transportation industry, where there's a shortage of, there's a national shortage of truck drivers. And it's only projected to grow and become more severe as the years go on. So it's a, it's a career path that people are not choosing to get into. So, you know, we, we pay a good rate, we're, I think we're near the top of the pay band, and it's still difficult to bring people onboard. I'd just like to remind the council that any kind of public work that's done is paid under prevailing wage. So usually, the prevailing wages are above what would normally be paid in the private sector. So to do work in the city of Pittsburgh is, it's kind of a premium already for our employees. So it's, you know, even with that said, it can be difficult to find people.
Okay, all right, that's it. I don't want to hold everybody up.
Just along those lines, what is a entry-level salary for a full-time driver?
In Pittsburgh? Well, Pittsburgh gets prevailing wage, so our drivers get paid what your city drivers get paid.
Okay.
Your city employees.
And you're still hiring, so folks can go onto Waste Management and look for career paths?
401K.
Okay. Counsel Zarella.
I'd like to also say, I'm very heartened by everything I've heard, in terms of the improvements you've made. I just have a few sort of practical questions. One, really simple, you mentioned $100 for an extra cart. Is that just for trash, or can you also get an additional recycling cart?
You can also get an additional recycling cart, and that is a one-time $60 fee. That's just for the cost of the recycling cart.
As to specific recyclables, you mentioned plastic films, how does that apply to labels and bottle wrappers and whatnot? You know, if you have a 2-liter that has the plastic label, or a bottle of Powerade, or whatever?
It's not really an issue. So because those wraps are pretty, adhere pretty good to the containers, they're not gonna come off during the sorting process and tangle up our equipment.
Okay, so it's not actually an issue of contamination, in the sense of the actual end product? It's just an issue of messing with your machines?
So initially, yes, I mean, that's really the biggest thing that we have to overcome. As far as, is each wrap, you know, compatible with the recyclable, you know, the bottle, is it of the same type of plastic? I mean, I can't say that, but our processes are able to deal with that, so that's, it's not a problem.
Okay. And just going back to Counselor Fleming's point, how clean is clean enough? Just to, you know, rinse under the tap? Or, okay, that's what I figured, I just wanted to make sure. And separation of, I know you don't have to actually sort anymore, it's single stream, but I've heard conflicting stories about whether, for example, let's say you have a glass bottle with a metal cap, like you have for many juice bottles, do you have to take the cap off before tossing it in the cart?
So with caps, especially with like, plastic caps, for example, we, just to kind of get the message out there, we prefer that, we'd ask that the caps be on the bottles, reason being, the caps themselves are too small to be sorted through our machinery. So if they're, if they remain on the bottle, it would, it's additional plastic that would end up in the plastic recyclable stream. So that's on that question. A metal cap on a glass bottle isn't particularly a problem. Just so everybody realizes, the glass, once it goes through our process, it breaks and falls apart. And the metal caps generally would be, probably fall through our equipment, but it's, it wouldn't, it's not gonna be a big issue for us, if someone chose to do that.
Yeah, just like everyone's saying, education, I figure...
Which, in fact, contradicts everything we used to sell 20 years ago about the cap, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, things do change, I think, in general. I mean, we're trying to, with the whole, you mentioned the single stream, the idea is, is that we want to encourage the convenience of it, because it does generate more participation, and generates a greater diversion from landfills. So I mean, that is, that's a, that's a great benefit of the single stream program.
Okay, excellent. And one last question, and I promise it will actually be the last question.
Oh, you're picking my crates.
We're gonna start holding people to that.
Similar.
Bulk trash, have, do you, or have you considered having a couple times a year, for bulk, household trash, not bulk in terms of like, large items, but in terms of, I've had a few people ask me, you know, for whatever reason, they frequently miss their pickups. Not you guys miss it, but they miss it. They miss putting their cart out, or whatever. And so they have to sort of prioritize, okay, I'm gonna put the food waste in the cart, and put the, you know, paper, not paper, because they're recycling that, but like the, whatever else, set it aside, store it somewhere, and try and put it in a cart when you've got extra space some week, or whatever. A few people have said that they wind up with five, six, seven bags, sometimes, kind of waiting to be parceled out, and they don't have the means to get to a transfer station, or dump, or anything like that. Is there any opportunity, aside from paying the fee for an additional cart, for them to get, sort of the way trash used to be picked up, where you could put out... Where you could put out, you know, five or six or seven bags at the curb once or twice a year and have it get picked up, like with the yard waste or the whatever else?
So I would say, under the current, uh, program, no. What some other communities do, um, and this is not the way the current contract's set up, but I guess if there was great interest, we could certainly explore this, is, um, you know, the automated system that we have in Fitchburg is very common. But the issue you're describing is not uncommon. And so sometimes communities will offer, uh, bags for sale, um, for overflow. So the idea would be is that if a resident has, either misses it, or you have a big event or a clean out, you can purchase bags. Some of the revenue would come back to the city to help cover the cost of the additional collection. And then, um, that would go, uh, that would, that'd basically be an outlet for the residents. But as the program stands today, that's not something that's part of the Fitchburg program. But, um, it's something that I, we could always consider.
And the reason is, is because, I mean, we can always look down the road and explore new avenues. But the reason is, is the reason why we went with the cart system, it was to clean up the city on trash day. If we go back to bags, we're back to defeating the purpose.
Right, no, that makes perfect sense. I was just thinking of maybe a once or twice a year type thing, not an on-demand. But, uh, but no, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Councilor Esqualia.
Um, so, yes, the, the audit was really great to see this morning, to see all the recyclables. Uh, I felt visually, it didn't look that bad. But there was a number of contamination, like a shower curtain, right? Appliances with cords. There was food. I've heard there's been diapers.
Yeah, for some reason or other, diapers are common. We, the, the best explanation that we can put on that is that people also sometimes think that compostable items, uh, go into the, um, recycling. So that's why sometimes we see potted plants, and maybe the food, and maybe the diapers. So that's probably, other than maybe just being lazy, I don't know what the other explanation could be.
Um, and then, so just to reiterate with the plastic bottles with the caps. So the goal there is to keep the caps from loose, from being loose in your equipment.
Correct.
So if you have a cap and you have the bottle, screw it on together.
Correct.
But if you don't have the bottle for the cap, the cap goes in the trash.
Correct. Yeah, and that would also go for any other small items. So the standard we like to, uh, give everybody is imagine like a two-by-two-by-two cube. That's kind of the, the, it has to be bigger than that. That's sort of the threshold for it to be compatible with our equipment. So one question that we get, uh, quite a bit is like, what about pill, pill bottles? They're plastic. People want to recycle those. Two reasons why we can't. First of all, they're not within the two-by-two-by-two, uh, criteria. And then the other thing is they're actually considered medical waste. And so that's not something that we can process with the rest of the, uh, plastics.
Pill bottles, not recyclable.
Not recyclable, so, yeah.
So when it comes to other things, we might not know. So pizza boxes are now recyclable.
Yeah.
As long as they're just greasy.
That's right.
And there's no food in them.
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's good news. But then I just heard, um, some slightly bad news is that our milk cartons with waxy insides, or soup containers, or whatever, those are no longer recyclable.
Correct. So what we consider to be, basically what people would call cartons, um, or aseptic containers, I guess, to be technical about it, would, uh, so again, that's one of those materials that could be recycled in sort of certain, maybe in a different, um, different world or something. But where we are here, um, there, the, the economics of it are not practical. So as a decision, a decision was made across the state for all the different recyclers that they would not be advertised as recyclable. It's not, uh, a, a major contaminant for us. They're relatively low volume, and they don't really cause any problems with our equipment. So it's not a major focus for us, but, but that is correct. That's not something that we would like to see. So what would hap, one of the things that's gonna be coming out, has come out from the state, and that one of the things that we're gonna continue to push through our publications, would be just to update residents with those, the new criteria. And certainly as criteria change, we'll continue to update our resources.
And on the curbside, I have heard, um, less, many, many less complaints in the past few months from the curbside pickup. The yard waste still get a fair number of complaints. And just one thing I want to, so I'm hoping that it'll get better, right? So I'm not really gonna speak to the past so much. But one thing I just want to, um, bring up is the Christmas trees. Those were huge, I mean, I, I think there were thirty names, addresses on a list that I would submit to Steve at the, at any point. So when, you know, the Christmas tree schedule comes up, that you're gonna have a, a large load, I guess, here in Fitchburg, so be prepared.
Sure, and I, I will say, last Christmas, uh, pickup week...
We had two, three inch snowstorms during the week during the collection.
Right. So, I mean, back-to-back blizzards, and they were buried. Once they're buried, they're buried until they thaw. I mean, we can't, you know, shovel them out as much as people would want us to. But I think that was just a timing thing, uh, with the Christmas tree pickup last week, last year.
Okay.
You know.
I gotta talk to Mother Nature when I schedule it.
Councilor Walsh.
I had a couple of questions, but they've been answered, but I just wanted to, um, support, uh, Councilor Green's suggestion that, um, education, educational materials be sent out with water bills or however we would do it to educate not only the public, but apparently the city council.
It's, it's, that's a, it's a great suggestion. It's actually been used in, in other communities. So, you know, it, it's something I...
Just so you know, the Recycling IQ grant actually paid for cars. They went to each, each household. And, and, uh, that's about a fifteen thousand dollar cost within itself. And putting, uh, items in the, uh, the water bills has a significant cost as well. We have explored that.
Hi. Councilor Fleming.
Quickly, Ward Five, there's a lot of, um, we have a lot of... A lot of wells in septic, so a water bill would not get that information to us.
Uh, Councilor Donnelly.
Thank you. I know you have a massive project. If you're, anyone in the property management business is also in the rubbish business. And I, I think you do a really good job. And little, little glitches, as Councilor Boishman said, uh, last year, I, my brother-in-law said, what do I do with a couch? I said, well, you go down and pay your money and, and they'll pick it up. Well, I think Tuesday came and it didn't get picked up. Thursday came, it didn't get picked up. Then in the mail, I get a citation from one board of health director, no, one board of health inspector, and the next day, another one. And he had paid his money, but, you know, it was a little glitched that, so I had to take the brunt of that one. I didn't really, I didn't call and make any noise. But you see a difference in the neighborhoods, you know, from single-family areas to multifamily areas in compliance, or lack of compliance? And does it go with education, single-family homes, multifamily homes? What's the biggest problem?
Yeah, so, um, no, it's a great question. Multifamily homes often can have the biggest, uh, challenges for contamination, and we look at that and say there's a lot of reasons for it. One of the, one of the reasons is, is that, um, as we talked about tonight, it's, is a challenge to reach out to people and get the message out there. And with multifamilies, one of the things is, is how, how do you, how do you reach people who, um, are renting? You know, we don't necessarily have their contact information. Um, we don't have a way to reach them as easily as a property owner. The other thing is, is that, um, multifamily, uh, residents tend to, um, you know, there's oftentimes more turnover amongst that community. They rent for a while, and they move on to somewhere else, or maybe a different community. Maybe one community has one set of standards, another community has a different set of standards, which is actually some of the thought process behind the universal, um, guidelines that were recently put out, is to help kind of unif, put a uniform, uh, approach to recycling. But, um, there are some very real challenges there, and I think that's why, one of the, those are a few of the reasons why we see, um, some, some more contamination in, out of that community.
Well, I thought you'd have a solution, because that's my challenge.
Yeah, well...
We, we try and do it, um, have a guy go, I mean, there's three days a week that we have to put rubbish out, get the barrels out and inspect and start to switch things around in this. Didn't you just get a grant for education? Now, my part of education is, we're getting educated, there's only a small percentage of people actually watching the show. The rest of the people will never see it. And even when we all leave, people that, well, can this go in, can that go in, how big can it be? It's, it's, it's constant challenge. Uh, and I've been working, years ago, I've seen rubbish barrels, regular standard rubbish barrels you buy in the store, from here to the wall. And that's how much they used to. So I know you've started to control substantially the amount of rubbish that people are generating, or at least somehow being, uh, getting paid for it. Priority, do you have much problem with cars blocking the barrels?
Yes.
So, my question to the council, or to everybody, is, should there be a rule of who has the priority? Should we make some kind of a rule that cars can't block the barrel? All right, your car's parked here, you put your barrel out here, it can't be picked up, not with a machine. I mean, that's the, so should there be a rule? And this isn't a single-family neighborhood problem primarily. This is in the neighborhoods that have the most problems, the most things blowing around the neighborhoods. I, I just want to know how, how big a problem it is and can we solve it?
What's happening is, they're reporting it to me and sending a picture, and we're, we're getting in contact with the property owner, unblocked barrels. These gentlemen know, uh, the route very well, and they'll, they won't send automated trucks, for example, to High Street, where there's cars parked on both sides of the road. That's an, that is a manual collection system.
Well, I mean, we could make some, we could make a rule, how to enforce it would be somewhat of a challenge. But on rubbish day, I mean, there's gotta be, people are creatures that have it. They know where they park, they know where they put their barrels out. But if it's, if it's a large enough problem, I think we should address it. Because I've seen, I've seen it happen quite a bit. But, thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You'll need to connect to the internet first.
Councilor Catty. We haven't hit the agenda yet, you know.
I know. Two questions, um, are the truck drivers now required to keep a log and notify you if they miss a street for whatever reason?
Yes, absolutely.
Because that's, that's what happened last year. They, your truck drivers weren't responding to board of health.
Right, and again, there were some, there was some turnover in the driver ranks, and it was forced turnover. It was...
So, so just an, an observation, during the holidays, I think that everyone could agree that recyclables probably double. What would be wrong with having recyclable pickup every week for two or three weeks during the holidays? Because when it starts to get backed up, and then we, the snow hits, everything's buried in. It would make sense to, during your peak period, to put more trucks on to do, to do the recyclables and clean, clean it up before the snow comes in. Just a thought, something...
It's all about budget.
I understand, but, so, on your end, you're gonna spend more afterwards anyway to pick everything up that wasn't picked up to begin with. It, to me, it would seem good, a good business decision to do that for three weeks and get the city cleaned up, because you're gonna do it anyway later. When, you know, when the snow hits and everything's buried in, you're still gonna go get that stuff when the snow, when the ice melts. I, I would, I would just think it would be a wash. I don't think it would be that expensive for you.
I, I mean, theoretically, everything should be in the bins anyway. So, you know, I guess we, if we did offer every week service, uh, you know, as was mentioned, there, it would be an additional cost. I mean, it's just very real cost of labor and trucks and fuel. And then we would have to certainly, before we feel to commit to that, we'd have to evaluate, do we have the staffing to do that? One of the, the, just to make it clear for everybody here, the way we currently handle the, the trash and the recycling pickup in the every other week, is that every driver goes out and does his trash route, um, first. He takes that same, and then he goes to the landfill and dumps. He takes that same truck, uh, and then will hit half of that neighborhood that he just picked up the trash in, and he'll pick up recycling in that same day. So we would have to get some additional staff and, and trucks to, to do that for a limited period of time. So that, that could be a challenge to, to make that work. So, um, I, I mean, I think, I mean, certainly, I think if the city wanted to explore every week recycling, or, I mean, we could talk about that.
I'm not saying all year long. I'm just saying during that peak period, where you, you know that your, your recyclables are gonna double for, during the Christmas holiday. You know, cardboard boxes and wrapping paper and whatever else, but...
You know, I mean, that's where I think, you know, something like the landfill as an overflow option, the drop-off area there is, uh, probably maybe the best bet right now. I mean, I realize not everybody has the opportunity or the, the ability to get over there, but, um, or then even, even as was said earlier, spacing it out to, you know, fit it in when you have, have capacity in your bin.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Green.
My, my only and final last question would be, could you provide us with the universal list of what the standards are for what's now acceptable and not acceptable into recycling?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I have one question and one comment, uh, because I know we could take up a lot of time. Originally, I was gonna ask you to geek out with me and talk to me about some of the technological innovations and how we're... But that said, I'm hoping at some point you start using AI to help influence, you know, where your repeat problem areas are and missed pickups are, as well as, um, you know, driver miscues to help get ahead of that. I know that, that may sound crazy in small municipalities, but AI for a large, you know, corporation, like Waste Management, could, you know, hopefully, um, help cut down on a lot of those inefficiencies. But my, my only question is about, um, I guess neighborhoods with hills, particularly during winter months, that are those repeat issue areas where trucks often get stuck. How are, are you improving that communication with the DPW to talk to them about kind of your, your high-risk list of, if it's snowed and if this isn't plowed, this is, you know, these are areas we just can't hit? Because I know it's frequently the same, uh, particularly in, in my ward, the same five or six streets, there are always the issue of the truck couldn't make it up the hill, or couldn't make it down the hill, uh, so they just didn't collect. How do you, how do you address that moving forward?
So, if I could hear it, go ahead. So, well, one thing after the last winter, um, yeah, that the city came back with Steve and the DPW was the tires on the trucks. I mean, there, there are scientific studies, right, that say regular treaded tires are just as effective in the snow as like a lugger tire, like a more aggressive tread. So the trucks had just, you know, tires that they have all year long. The city asked for new tires, so I bought a whole bunch of tires. So the Fitchburg trucks are all gonna have winter tires for the winter. One thing, another thing that came up was putting chains on the tires on our trucks, which the mayor was actually very, very adamant that that doesn't happen. Just because of simply, our trucks are stopping and, are starting and stopping, you know, every few feet. Whereas like a plow truck, right, you can chain it up, and it'll drive up the hill in one shot, down in one shot, so the road's plowed. We're stopping and starting. So all you're gonna do is just dig up the streets, um, with the chains. So, but we have, I have purchased the tires. They will be on before the flakes fly. As far as communication, ideally, what I think we would like to do is, we started opening up the communication with the DPW last year, um, continue with that. And especially, you know, on a given Monday, right, can we get Monday's routes, the streets, done before we hit town? You know, is that possible? So that's the avenue that we're gonna pursue with the DPW. So that's pretty much...
That was gonna be my exact ask of just coordination of, of routes, because, you know, it does, uh, once these streets get plowed, it, um, get, get either plowed in, or, or the snowbanks get so high, you end up with a public health issue of, you know, just rubbish building up and no way of actually collecting it. So, um, I think if you guys could work on that this year, that would, uh, you know, I know that doesn't, it doesn't get fixed overnight. It might not get fixed in one season, but if you, if you could work on that coordination and seeing where you can make some of those systematic improvements in, in some of these, these problem, um, or trouble areas, I think that'd go a long way.
Yeah, no, absolutely, Counselor. I mean, honestly, aside from the sanitary, uh, impact, it's the safety impact. You have a sixty or seventy thousand pound truck careening down a hill.
I fully understand, yeah. So I, I just want to say this, it, as well, you, you guys came in, um, you know, I, I know last year, near last winter, uh, we were frustrated and angry and expressing the sentiments of many of our residents. And it, it's hard to come before, but you guys came in front of us, and, and you owned, uh, the issues that occurred in the past. You didn't make excuses for it, um, and, uh, you've talked about how you're addressing it moving forward. So I, I appreciate your candor. I appreciate your owning up to, uh, the shortfalls last year and, uh, confident, um, and optimistic for, uh, for the winter ahead. So thank you for, uh, for coming before us this evening.
Thank you, it was our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, um, we'll now go to a report of committees. Uh, Councilor Dina Tally.
Finance committee met last Tuesday, uh, not this past Tuesday, but the one before, and took up, uh, the orders that are listed. Uh, all orders were adopted.
Councilor Boishman.
Two sixty-six dash eighteen, two sixty-seven dash eighteen.
Motion made and seconded already.
Councilor Boishman, would you be willing to invoke... Counselor Boishman, would you be willing to invoke the mercy rule and will you not belabor this if you're given the opportunity to...
Well, as long as the record shows that I'm only voting no on those two items, and the rest I vote yes on. That's all I want.
Counselor Caddy, would you be amenable?
If he promises me that's what he's going to do, I will change my motion.
I promised you that, I told you that.
Okay, I will hold out 266 and 267.
All right, I have a motion and second to approve the Finance Committee report excluding 266 and 267-18. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Zarella.
I'd just like to note for the record that 270-18 was additionally amended for technical reasons.
Great. I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Motion to approve 266 and 267-18.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 266 and 267-18. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition, Counselor Boishman. Thank you, Counselor Boishman. Public Safety Committee, Counselor Green.
Yes, we met this evening for petition 249-18. RSC Global Holdings LLC doing business as Rayco Motors. Petition for class two dealer's license to be located at 447 Waters Green, Fitchburg, Mass. That was granted unanimously.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 249-18. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Public Works Committee, Counselor Caddy.
Public Works Committee, petitions, all of them have been, we've heard them before, and they've all been held.
Motion to accept committee's report.
I have a motion and second to approve the Public Works Committee report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Move 277-18 and 278-18 be sent to the Finance Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 277, 278-18 to Finance Committee. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
279-18 and 280-18 be sent to Council as a whole committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 279 and 280-18 to the Council as a whole committee meeting. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Move 281-18 through 289-18 be sent to their respective committees.
Second.